You're not a bad joker.
I have a repertoire of two jokes and one of them's permanent and the other one rotates through.
But I laugh every time you do that.
Okay, well. All right, well, so I have asked Amber Gardner to give us our invocation after which Chief Brian Graham will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear, kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet today as citizens of Highland, Utah. Please bless that we can listen and be a part of the community process. Please bless those making decisions that they can do so wisely in the best interest of all those involved. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Surprise. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we'll start with unscheduled public appearances. If anybody has an issue they'd like to raise with the council, you can talk for three minutes. If there is an item that says public hearing on the agenda and you'd like to speak to that, you could wait to that. There's only one of those today. So for any other comments on issues that we'll be talking about today, I will entertain them. So come up to the stand, state your name, and let us know what your concern is.
I'm Peter Kilger. I'm here to just talk quickly about the orphan space purchase.
Yes.
That's on the agenda.
It's a discussion item. It's not a decision.
Discussion. I understand that. But I prepared just a little sheet of paper of information about the property that my neighbors and I are hoping to purchase from the city.
Okay.
So it pretty much speaks for itself, but it's got the endorsement of our neighbors, obviously. So I'm hoping that it gets your endorsement, too.
Okay.
And I have seven, but there's neither. I gave the recorder. Is this the thing one of you sent? It is. Yes, it is. And actually, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Yes.
Sorry, I only have three minutes, so I wrote it down. I am here to bring up some concerns about the Norton Athletic Facility that have started holding Saturday night regular events. I wouldn't say every Saturday, but they're becoming more and more frequent. I'm sure when they came and proposed their business, they said they were an exercise facility closing at 10:00 PM. We only need this number of stalls. They are now holding dances until 11:45. Picture driving up to a stoplight and parking next to a car with the base going. That's my house now. And they are not closing in 11:45. It's going till, I mean, 10:00. It's going till 11:45. We, if it's that late for us, I'm sorry. My name's Sarah Miguel. I live across the street from the ACE and the Alpine Credit Union. I can only imagine what it's like for the townhomes behind them, not to mention the indecent amount of parking that's happening all through the ACE, skateboarding all through the ACE until midnight, parking in almost the drive-throughs of the credit union all along the roads, and then they come out of the dance hyped and peeling out, honking, screaming at each other. Anyway, very invasive. We called Norton to address the issue. No response. My husband walked over, graciously talked to one of the people doing the music. He was kind. The music did not turn off. We called the police multiple times. No change. Let's see. So anyway, I attended a council meeting maybe a year ago. A woman presented, she wanted to have a reception center under the Elevate Dental, and she was told she couldn't have it because it would be noise after 10:00 PM, parking issues, and Highland doesn't do receptions. So I'm just asking the city council graciously to please enforce the code, let Norton do what they proposed they would do, but they cannot become a dance center reception facility after 10:00 PM. Noise. I would really, really be grateful. Thank you.
Amber Gardner, again, actually live next door to Sarah, across the street here, and I just want to echo her feelings on the Norton Performance Center. It is, our neighborhoods are rockin', so I can't imagine how it is over here, but...
So your house is, you're off the road, though.
Yeah, I'm off the road.
Your house is in, and you still, it impacts your...
The honking, the driving, that's what we're hearing most, more than the music. The honking, the traffic. I don't know why they all need to honk at each other and yell as they leave, but they sure enjoy it. And that's my feelings on that. And my second thought is, once, every other year, we get the curbs to our neighborhood taken out. I don't know what's wrong with them, but every time, they take out the curbs on both entrances and redo them. I don't know if it's for accessibility or what, but now they've got the X's, like they're going to start again. But every time, we still have a lake at the south entrance. So I don't know who's in charge of that, but it would be great, especially in the winter when it...
So you're talking about the one...
Yeah, the two entrances at 10-600 and 10-900.
So the 10-900 is, or the 10-600 is the one with the...
Yeah, the one that's straight across from the police station. Anyway, and while they're taking them out, we would love it if you could just put in a light. I know you can't, but I'm going to plug for it. My daughter was in a really bad accident there last year and totaled our car, and thankfully, she's going to be fine. But we keep adding more and more and more and more right here, and there's no way you can get out on Tempanogas Highway, so they all come right here. Even the police have to get out right here. It would just be great if we could figure out a way. Last time I spoke to this issue, you know, we talked about taking out the median, and still it's there. You can't see very well. So anyway, those are my thoughts from across the street.
Thank you.
I thought I'd jump up here since these are my neighbors, and I've got the same issue with Norton, so I won't elaborate anymore on that. But I have two additional items I'd like to discuss. One of them has to do with the fence here on Alpine Highway. Our fence, part of it's finally fallen over. When we first moved in, I replaced the caps and did some of the brickwork on those columns that kind of maintain that, but I appreciate a city would take care of the fence.
Okay. Well, what I would ask you to do is just call the city and have them put in a work order to do it. It'll get scheduled. There is a report of concern on our website that you can use, but if you just call into the office and say where it is, it'll...
Okay. I'll pass it on.
We'll just make sure it gets scheduled.
And I'm sure they see it as well.
Probably, but our grounds crews aren't out there as much yet, so nobody might have seen it.
And my third item, this is one that you're well aware of, and I'm sure everybody is here in this Highland, has to do with the precious irrigation. We would love to be, meet all your guys' requirements as far as watering certain times. It's still an issue, and it's been going on for years. I'm not sure what your guys' plan is going forward to address this issue. I don't know if it's an infrastructure issue or whatever it is, but it'd be nice if it got resolved. And so we could take the watering times that you guys proposed seriously. You know, my neighbor waters his, the King's, right next door to me. If he waters it at the same time, we're supposed to water it at the same time, mine comes out like a little, like a little kid peeing.
Actually, they do better than that.
No.
Little kids do.
Yeah, there you go. Nice.
Okay.
And so, 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 one thing, you know, and I know my neighbors have had theirs tested and so on, and they'll come and test it like four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon. It hasn't gotten any better. I'm not sure what the real issue is here. It could be just original design issue, infrastructure. I'm not sure what it is, but it'd be nice to get that fixed, especially since we're going to be under more pressure this year.
Yes. It is a pressure issue, and one of the factors is that Highland uses six acre feet per irrigatable acre, and we should be using three. So Highland is using twice as much as it should be. So we're all to blame in one way or another because there are people that are very responsible, but then there are other people that just water too much. So, and that impacts everybody. And the system was designed for the three acre feet per acre usage, not the six. And one of the things that will happen in the next couple of years is we'll have meters on, and then we can track usage and start doing some enforcement. But I live in the same neighborhood, and we have pressure problems there, too.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Referring to this. When I was on the council before, we had a big debate about who owns those fences along there. At that time, the decision was that the homeowners owned it. So is the city owns it now?
The city is responsible for them.
Okay.
And so, and I've talked to Josh about this. Those fences, those wood fences there along Alpine Highway, we actually are obligated to repair them. Owners sometimes do it on their own, but...
Yeah, because we had a big debate before, and I thought we decided the owners were in charge of those. It might be interesting. So Josh says otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could put a recast.
We could, if we got a lot of donations. All right. Any other comments? Okay, one more.
Thanks. My name is Nick Bayless. I also live in Viewpoint, and I'm looking, I just, I wanted to support the proposal. I noticed the new proposal about, I know it's still a discussion that you guys are working out on purchasing the open space. Sorry, I'll take this off to talk back. But I wanted to voice my support, and I've been a resident of Highland for 10 years, and I love living here, and I'm really grateful for all your guys' service to us. I just wanted to make a couple of points with my area. There's kind of three main reasons why I think it makes sense, and I did message some of the city council members, so I know that there's some awareness of this. But we specifically, there's a hill on the south side of Viewpoint that slopes up, and I'm just above that. And so we have this orphaned land that has a slope on two sides, and then the homes, and then there's some people with a contract agreement, a maintenance agreement with the city. So there's four of us homeowners that are all unified and ready to purchase at any point if it becomes something that we can do. It's just currently a bunch of dirt and rocks, and weeds grow, so it's unsightly, so the first reason would just be to beautify the neighborhood and the city. The second point being, it would be nice to remedy a serious safety concern, and that's that multiple of the homes along the way have had broken windows due to just, it's just loose rock, and it's very windy in that area, right at the mouth of American Fork Canyon. And so when there's been big storms over the years, like we've had four large windows taken out completely. In my case, because it kept happening, we ended up completely taking off all the siding on the back of our house and put in industrial windows so that it's better reinforced, but I would love to solve the problem. We have open space really close to the property. And so the safety concern, I would love to address. And then I, also, I just feel like if we were able to, if these homeowners were able to purchase and maintain that property, that it would alleviate the need for the city to come up and mow down the weeds, which is done twice a year. On two occasions, I've been at home when they've come and mowed, and I've had rocks kicked out against the house from the mowers because the open space is very close to the property line, where, of course, it's on the property line, close to the home. One time, it hit a window and left a mark, but it didn't quite shatter the window. So I would love to resolve that, and also I'm willing to help in any way to aid the process if there's anything that I can do. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Ron Wells. I would like to echo. I'm also a Viewpoint homeowner. I'm in a very similar situation with Nick. About 10 years I've lived there, and on a couple of occasions, I've tried to do the open space improvement, and then there was a chance to buy, and it just seems like every couple of years, it gets recycled. So I'm hopeful that these lots that really are of value to the homeowners, but it's hard to imagine them being of value to, you know, for some other reason, I'm just hopeful that the city council will act. I have also prepared a sheet that I gave to Kelly. Would it be helpful if I emailed that as well, or is that sufficient?
That's probably sufficient.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Sure.
Hey, Nathan or Kelly or whoever, since it seems as if those residents are not willing to just join the party on Saturday night, which would be an option. I'm just trying to explore, just trying to explore. So their zone as a sports and fitness center, is that right? The Norton?
The use or the zoning?
Yeah, the use. That's what they, their use is approved under. How do we define a sports and fitness center? Because, as I've been told, dancing is a sport.
Say that again.
I'm just wondering, so, I mean, if a sports and fitness center is an accepted use, then I was just wondering how we define sports and fitness? Because when I asked, at one point, I was told that dancing is a sport, and so if they're holding dances, that is an accepted use within the zone. So I'm just wondering, like, if there's anything that can be done aside from calling the police?
Basically, are they allowed to have dances in there?
Not after hours. That's the biggest issue with this.
And those hours are...
It's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And that's enforceable? I just think that's important that we clear up because McKay is here to talk about a project in that same area, so I just want to make sure that we know what the rules are.
Can I get some clarification on that, too? What was the noise?
If you're, excuse me, you need to come if...
Sorry. And... And I don't know this. I'm just wondering what the, as far as noise ordinance, as far as what the requirements are for this area and so on.
So there's no decibel? It's a subjective if it's disturbing to the neighborhood before 7:00 and after 10:00?
Well, I'll give you my Saturday experience. And sorry, Sarah and Amber, I didn't give that earlier, but yeah, we're sitting there, and it's like 10:00, and this base is going like crazy. You know, it's a nice, you know, driving base, so on. If I was dancing, I'd probably have a good time. But I'm at home, trying to go to sleep. My wife is working the following day, has got to get up at 5:00, work labor and delivery, and I've got early church meetings, so sleep's really important to me. So I finally go downstairs, and we have kind of a home theater room downstairs, and it's insulated, so on. I could still hear the bass down there. I turned on Captain America so I could watch that, kind of drowned it out because that would put me out. But anyways, I took a little help, too. I still struggle going to sleep with the noise.
Okay.
So it, I'm not, it's a legit issue.
I agree.
So Mayor, can I, Nathan and Kelly, this zoning is town center. Is this a permitted type of use? I mean, we've already zoned it, or said that a sports and fitness, so there, you know, I think that's what Commissioner Bills is talking about, that that might...
So this is not a discussion item on the agenda, but it's something we can talk about later.
That would be some of the questions.
I think we've got good input, and staff will get back to us.
That's fair.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I have one quick follow-up? I didn't use three minutes before.
On the list that's in the packet for today, there's a spreadsheet regarding the open space, orphan space. There's a packet, and there's a table in there, and there are two areas, and the only two I looked at really were Viewpoint. There's 107 and 108. But there's a number of lines, and it's, when you post this for public, I hope that you make it a little more clear because you really can't relate where on the map on this image each line relates to. So...
Yes. It's, the primary purposes of that agenda is for council members, and they, we've all gone through all that.
Okay. So when it goes out for public, hopefully, it'll be easier for us to...
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Awesome. Next item is a presentation by, let's see, the mayor. That's me. Do we have those slides queued up?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Would you like this?
Well, yes. That would be easier to...
Oh, I was going to the computer. Yeah. To your computer, okay.
All right. So we had the city survey that was conducted in March, and as usual, it's a mix of online and paper. This year, we were a little bit more explicit. Normally, we just, we say one per household, but I know my wife and I typically fill one out. I do online, she does paper. So this year, we said anyone over 18 that lives in Highland can fill it out, and we sent two surveys out with every bill, and then we do an address check, a little bit to verify that we aren't getting oversampled. And we had more respondents than we've had in the past. We had 1,270. Let's, it might be too far, so let's just go with the next one. So the mix of paper and online was 55-45. It's moving slowly from 50-50 to weighted to online, but there are a lot of us that still like paper. Next slide. One of the things that I noticed in the data that we were looking at is almost all categories where we were rated on a service or whatever ticked up a little bit. So for five years, we have been at 3.5 for quality of life. This year, the average was 3.6, so that's good. You can see there are a sliver of people that aren't happy. The red is poor, and two and a half, three percent that say it's fair, but most people that live in Highland like it a lot. So next slide. This is a rating that was done for all the services in Highland. So we've got fire, EMS, garbage, police, et cetera, and it's sorted left to right, the best rated services to the worst services. And not surprisingly, roads are still the least good service, but it's, if you look at a year-over-year trend, it's been going consistently up since we started our rotor improvement plan, and we took a big jump up this year, and hopefully next year will be over 50% in the green. Right now, it's still not bad. The red could be way worse, and it's only, it's less than 25%. Next. Staff and elected officials, surprise, surprise, elected officials have the most red. It's an improvement over last year, which is good, but staff is generally viewed very favorably in the community, and I think that's a fair assessment. I do sit with them a lot, and I see how they perform, and I am delighted personally with our staff. I could get weepy talking about them. They do really good work, and I appreciate it very much. Next slide. We ask a number of questions about taxes this year, and sometimes people get panicked and say, "Oh, you're going to tax us to death," or whatever, but we're just taking temperatures, right? And seeing where the residents are. We're going to talk about RAP tax later on, but I will not make you stay till the end of the meeting to let you know what a RAP tax is. RAP tax is called a Recreation Arts and Parks Tax. It is a levy that we can put on sales, local sales. It's a 0.1% add to our sales tax. American Fork uses it, Cedar Hills uses it, and the money that's collected there goes directly to the city. It's not shared anywhere. We can use it for recreation arts or parks, so we can do capital improvements or fund operations. It's a tax that if the council voted to have it, and there's a process we have to go through to do that, but if that got approved, then the voters would have to approve it in the fall. So why is it good or bad? Well, the good part is, because it's a sales tax, that means people that come to use our splash pad that aren't Highland residents that end up shopping here, they get to help pay for that splash pad with the tax. So to me, it distributes the load for our parks a little bit better than just taxing us specifically. So personally, I think that is a good, if there's such a thing as a good tax, that there is, it's a better tax than other options. People like our trails, and, but there's still, there's no tax other than the RAP tax that's above 50% in the green. So that just tells the council, you know, what your feelings are, and if there's an issue that we need more money for specific things, then what we need to do is to do a good job educating you about the need and what are the pros and cons, and why are we asking for something and have a specific plan. So it's possible that a RAP tax would come our way either this year or next, but in the end, it'll be your choice. So I think that's also a good part about that. It's a 10-year tax, and you can renew it once. So it has an automatic sunset, so that's a nice part of that, too. Property taxes have no sunset clauses. All right, next slide. There was a decision in December of, was it 2019?
Yes.
That to sell some trails in the Wimbledon area and associated open space. It was a little over a mile of trail and over five acres of land. There were residents that didn't like that. They ran a referendum. They got enough signatures, and the rule is that you are required to put it on the next municipal election. So we've had to wait one election cycle to get there. The council could overturn that decision on its own, and the councils regularly overturn decisions. Every time we do a rezone or fix an ordinance, we're overturning a previous council decision, so there would be nothing wrong with that. It happens all the time. But we wanted to get a sense of what the community thought, and so there were three options on the table. One was, do you want the council to rescind that decision? Do you want it to go to vote in December? Or a third option was, I really don't know. There's not enough information. And that was the biggest chunk, followed by take it to a vote in November, so I would not expect the council to do otherwise. I think it'll go to the ballot, and we will provide information in a neutral format from the city, and then I'm sure there are residents on either side of that equation that will weigh in as well, whether it's with Facebook pages or campaign signs or meetings or whatever. My only request to residents is that it does not become contentious, that there are no personal attacks, that it just becomes an issue that's discussed on the merits and doesn't get personalized. Sometimes these things can get a little bit personal, and that's uncomfortable for everybody involved. So just, what does the refs say? Keep it clean? Keep the punches above the belt and out of whatever other areas that they can't punch? Anyway, so it looks like game on for that. Next, there was a question about library services. What would you like more of? And evidently, there's a lot of gardeners or gardener wannabes here. Maybe Scott could teach you. gardener wannabes here. Maybe Scott could teach a class.
That's a surprise.
Yeah, more popular than tech classes. Next is for youth services. Those were adults. And then in the youth category, programming technology was quite popular. And then after school study help. So at the end, we all, we ask a question, like how long have you lived in Highland? You can see the mix. We're still overweighted in the 10 or more years that people have lived here. So people come here and they stay. Marsh, you can repent and come. You have a store. And next slide. And then how long do you plan on living in Highland? Well, there goes, it's very sticky. Over three-quarters of the people plan on staying here more than 10 years from now. So that's, I think, a pretty good indictment, or not indictment, but a statement on Highland is a great place to live. We've got great people and it's really, to me, the people, right, that make it that way. I think it's a, we care about each other, we try and do good things. And then elected officials, we try and just not create too many problems. Next. What area of Highland do you live in? We have an easy way to divide the city with Alpine Highway and Timpaniogas Highway. And you can tell where the most homes are. They're not in the northeast. And the southeast is also diminished and the southwest is where a lot of people live and then the northwest. Do you have children at home? Lot of empty nesters, so we're a little bit older, which we'll see in the next slide or the next set of slides. So I took a look back to when we started, first started doing city surveys and you can see here the number of respondents. And we, for some reason, we had a big dip last year. I don't know what happened. But we did have a dip. But the surprising part of that for me was that the online surveys didn't happen. Like, to me, it would have been easier to do it online. Anyway, but we're back up, we're past where we were before, so that's good. Next. Quality of life, you can see that it, there's a, the bottom green appears to be growing and the top green, it's, we had a little uptick this year. Next. Elected official ratings. We were really good in 2018 and we're almost back to there again. We had a bump in 2019. That was mostly about pickleball, I think. Staff ratings, you can see that there's consistent improvement there. They were also impacted by the 2019, but if you look at the top line green, there is a kind of a trend going up. Next. How long do you plan to remain in Highland? The top green is moving up slowly. The longer, darker green is growing. That's good. Age of respondents, and you can see that that's getting older. So I guess that means I'm not getting any younger. Next slide. City services. Again, you can see everybody took a dip in 2019 and last year to this year, we're flat to slightly up in most cases, slightly down in a couple. Go through the next one. Events, you know, we're slightly up. I thought we did a lot of cool stuff last year. The, I thought the fling, the parade was really neat, the service, the senior dinner was really, really fun. So I just, I guess I'm not everybody. Next. Public safety is kind of about where it is. Brian, you're just, you're lagging there. Just, you're, you're just good. And we'll take good. Good, B+, B+ rating. Next. And this is where roads, you can see roads has done a consistent up and we had a big jump last year. I expect if we get the road to Costco fixed, we'll be, we'll take another big jump. That, the only thing holding it up is property. And we have two acquisitions to close still. And if it doesn't close, it'll push into next year and my apologies, but that's, we're working as hard as we can. It's just, government moves slowly and we generally want that, by the way. We'd rather it move slowly than fast, but sometimes it just happens that way. So this year or next, we did get the, on May 15th, we have the east-west connectors done and that took 40 years. So a couple of years on the Costco road is, is gonna be not a big deal. Anyway, next. We are done. Any questions, council? I'll have more details. I'll put my post online where you have access to all the data. I'm about a third of the way through the comments. There were 670 comments and I've responded. I write replies to all, as many comments as I can and I'm almost to 300 replies. So, working on it. Alright.
So, can I ask something?
Yep.
So, you were just showing they're not happy with elected officials. I'd like to see some of those comments so I would know what we could do to improve on.
Yes. If, for the previous polls, you can go to my blog. I have all the comments listed there. Typically, I categorize them, so if you wanna see categories of comments, you can look at them. This one, I'll send you a link, but I'll have it in a blog probably in a month or so where you can just go through it and look at it. You know, when people comment, they're typically more motivated by an unhappy experience than happy experience. But I looked at the breakdown so far, 'cause I do a sentiment, like is it, I just go 1, 0, or negative 1. And that's somewhat subjective, but the zeros are people that just say, "Hey, we need to make this better," right? And I don't view that as a negative, that's a positive.
Sure.
But if you, all caps, exclamation points and horrible, those kind of words, then okay, that is not just an ask for improvement. That's somebody that's really not happy. So the zeros are about 60 to 70%. The negatives are about 20 and then the positives are 10. So about twice as many negative as positive, but still mostly just constructive, I'll call it constructive criticism. And there's interesting things. There were a few surveys that were replicated because there was a lengthy comment identical three times. Right? So I know that that person felt strongly about something and decided to...
Vote three times.
Vote three times. But on 1,270, I'm not gonna worry about voting three times by one person. Anyway, any other questions?
No, thanks for your work on that. I know it's a ton of work and, you know, I love your spreadsheets. I do.
I love them too. Not as much as people, but almost. Alright, next item, consent. We have one item on consent. Any comments on that? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve consent, item 3A, approval of the meeting minutes from March 16th and March 30th, 2021.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Brittany. We ready to vote? We're not doing electronic voting.
Yes, it will be all vocal.
Okay, so we'll just take a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that passes unanimously. Next item is a public hearing, plat amendment Highland Fields, lots 6 and 7. Kelly, is that you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And I apologize that we're having to vote vocally today as Aaron is out. And so I just don't know how to do it. So that's, doing it this way for now. This is a plat amendment request to combine two lots. The request is by applicant Brandon Fairbanks. These are the two lots. This is over by Ridgeline Elementary. This is the original plat, if it would. Okay, there it is. It's the Highland Fields Plat A. This was approved back in 2014 by the city council. This is the amended plat. Like I said, they're just combining them and it's making it a lot of 1.46 acres. To my understanding, the purpose is just, there is no house built on either of the lots and they're just wanting to build a larger house. And we as staff just recommend that the city council hold that public hearing and approve this plat amendment subject to these two stipulations, which are very standard.
Okay. Let's open up a public hearing on this issue. I get to use my gavel. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this? Is there anyone online, Kelly?
No, there is no one online, Mayor.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And council, any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
I move that the city council accept the findings and approve Highland Fields at B, subject to the two stipulations recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. We'll start with Kurt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Tim? Alright, that passes unanimously. Next item, site plan, Town Center Plaza West Pad. This item, I believe, was continued from last, last week.
This was on the agenda for the March 30th city council meeting. This is WPI's request. That's the developer to receive site plan approval for their Highland Town Plaza West Pad. This is the, it's taking a second to load, sorry. Overall, the sign we made, that yellow, if you can see it, on the west side is part of a purchase agreement that they are also requesting. That's another item on this agenda. There are, there are three parts to this development that are in the agenda today. There's this site plan approval request and then the purchase agreement request and then the final plat request. And that's all for the same development. A little bit of background, this is in the town center overlay and so it does need to follow the architectural standards for the town center. And it is in, it's designated as mixed use in the general plan. And that purchase agreement is the request to purchase approximately 2,433 square feet of Highland city land and we'll address that after this. This is the site plan. The lot is .899 acres and the building is for approximately 6,153 square feet. The main accesses come from SR 92 and Town Center Boulevard and they are providing 47 parking stalls for the site. This is just a general parking plan, just to kind of show what is required by the code with how many stalls they need by the square footage. For this requested pad, they require is 24 stalls based on the square footage and they are providing 40, oh, is it 46 or 47? I thought it was 46. Oh, it's 47, okay. This is the traffic flow management plan that Hales Engineering drew up. We did send y'all over email the council the updated version. The draft is what is in the staff report, which is what is online. The only change with this, with the finalized version is that, if you can see where my mouse is, right here, that's on the east side of the FIS building. On the draft, it had the curb being extended to the south to kind of make a pinch point. When we met as staff and with representatives of Hales Engineering and the developer, we decided it would be better to not extend that curb as it would do more bad than good, essentially. They do still have the do not enter signs that would be installed and then the stop signs when you're facing east. Basically, with this traffic flow plan, the, because we understand that there are concerns from the tenants that are there and citizens that are driving around and parking in this area, through our meetings and our discussions and the developers' discussions with tenants, basically, the overall goal is to be able to implement option A. Option A includes this light being put at this intersection at 5,600 West and SR 92. This is in UDOT's plan to have this light here. I know that there have been discussions with the residents that live north of this intersection and they know that this light is supposed to go in. It's just a matter of when. We don't know details when it comes to UDOT's plans, but that is what it would be ideal for this development is for that intersection to come, or for that light to go in that intersection.
So Kelly, just to be clear...
Yes.
WPI has zero say in that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Option A and option B is, it's kind of almost a mis...
Us as staff looking at the possibilities.
Yeah, so option A and option B, they're, they're really, all we're saying is this could happen or that could happen. And our preference would be the A versus B, but we really, we have some influence there as a city. WPI would have much less.
That is correct. And part of option A would be, if you see this A right here, this is the access that we are hoping to get. I know that Todd, our city engineer, has reached out to Rocky Mountain Power. This would go over Rocky Mountain's power, Rocky Mountain Powers land and so we'd have to come up with some sort of agreement to be able to get a road over their land. We haven't received a response from Rocky Mountain Power yet, but we are hoping to. And that is a stipulation that's included in the staff report as city staff working with or reaching out to Rocky Mountain Power and getting a response from them, essentially.
So that's an action on our end to request it.
Yes.
We would request an easement, right? We wouldn't necessarily buy the land?
Essentially, a swap is what would be ideal because we do have that strip of land right where option B would be.
Oh.
And so if we did not get option A, option B is where we would consider having that road. We do have the width for a minimum road. We have 24 feet right there. And so that could be a possibility. If we don't get that, we can kind of try to work with them in selling them that piece and see if we can get option A is the goal.
So we have, we have some trade-offs there we could make. So that, and that might actually be better for them, I'm thinking. But that's just me thinking.
Yeah, honestly, the option A would resolve a lot of these concerns. I know on the staff report, we specify that these, option A would be a long-term solution. The developer and Hales Engineering has brought up the short-term solutions, which are those do not enter signs and the stop signs. And then we have the striping that's just south of Wendy's. They, the developer has agreed to put that striping in now and also to, they have an agreement with Wendy's to take out the existing median or the existing island that's right there. And they said that they would work with them and do that now to put those landscaping islands in on the north side and then on the south side, just paint those medians until that future pad is developed. And then we will address that again with that parking floor right there just south of Wendy's, when that future pad site plan comes in. And another point, you, I did give y'all some sheets of paper. You have the 11 by 17 sheet of this traffic flow plan, unless you couldn't really see it on the PowerPoint. And it also was emailed to you, but just so you have it. And then another sheet that y'all have is an agreement that WPI wrote up to send to FIS and to get their signature. They didn't sign it officially yet, but they did send an email agreeing to these specifications. Basically, what this is, for those that don't have the sheet of paper yet, is just that, well, all of these things are included in the stipulations, but it's just that the FIS employees and FIS management will continue to, if you can see in this visual, just the one-way flow to allow for overflow stacking alongside the building. And so they're just making sure that the overflow stacking of the drive-through is not blocking these parking stalls right here. And so they usually, FIS, if it does get to the overflow stacking point, FIS will send out one of their employees to manage that and make sure that cars do not go in front of where those people could be backing out. And I know that the reason why they're putting that, those do not enter signs... And I know that the, the reason why they're putting that, those do not enter signs is because people will come in through that east entrance and then try to cut into the drive-through, and so we're making that a one-way, a one-way entrance. Moving on, this is the landscape plan. They do have more than what's required for percentage and landscape. We are requiring a pedestrian access be connected from the sidewalk that's along SR 92. Sorry, it's kind of difficult to see, just because that is something that's required of, in the town center design standards. These are some elevations we have. When this was reviewed with the planning commission, we did add a stipulation just that there would be an additional awning on the west side, just to have four-sided design architecture. Even though it is the backside, that's another thing with the Highland Town Center design standards, just to make sure you have four-sided architecture. And then the appropriate notices were sent out for this meeting. We have received no written correspondence. Obviously, we've had, we've heard concerns from the tenants around there about the traffic flow, and the developers and staff have been working with them over the last couple of weeks. And like it says on the slide, the developer did meet with the owner of Myers this weekend, which Marsh is al, Marsh is also present, and presented this traffic flow plan that was presented to y'all. And then that, also that point, that FIS agreed to continue with the traffic management When it went to the planning commission, they did approve the architectural plan as being consistent with Highland City standards, with those additional stipulations. Number seven, we are, that's the directional signage plan. It was their solution to, or our solution at the time, to try to manage the traffic flow, but as stated in the staff report, we are requesting or suggesting that you replace number seven with this seven through 14, which are, it's basically the traffic flow management plan in stipulation form, just ensuring that each of those things happen. But number 11 is that extension of the curb, and so we're just requesting that you remove that, or we remove that stipulation before it is approved. And so with this motion, it would just be the 13 stipulations recommended by staff. So it's the one through six original, and then the seven through 14, but without stipulation 11. So hopefully Stephanie can get that in the minutes. And then Dan Schmidt is here, who is the property owner, and then Marsh is also here, who's the owner of Myers, if you have any questions for them.
Can, can we ask questions of Kelly?
Sure, yes.
I'm like, no.
Then if we want to bring Dan up, he can come.
Sure. That'd be great.
Okay, Kelly.
And the representative of Hales Engineering is also present.
Okay.
Forgot to mention that.
So on this option A, which seems to be the preferable option.
Yes.
Let me understand, that B property behind the development, next to the substation, is city-owned property that we would maybe trade or something? What is, how does that, how does that work? Because it's not a road to the...
What option B is, that is just our parcel.
Right.
That's the one with the purchase agreement where they're taking out a little strip of it.
Okay.
But that's just the rest of our land, and so we would look into making that a road if we did not get that agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to get option A.
But I thought UDOT had already nixed that.
We would work harder on it, essentially, just trying to get a commercial access from it. The thing is, is we haven't spoken with UDOT as a city and getting it commercial. Okay, you know what? Todd's going to come up and answer that. That's better.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because I wasn't quite sure what the B road was, because I understood it had been nixed, so I don't know.
So, the B road is our current access. That is our access to well number five, so well number five sits right next to Myers on the west side. We've always accessed off of SR 92 for that wellhouse. We have a little 12-foot driveway. The problem is, is patrons of this area actually started using that and trying to get in, so we tried to put up some barricades and other things, because it's dangerous. We would really like to improve that. We did approach UDOT jointly, kind of as a developer slash city, to see what the options were. Yes, they, they turned it, turned us down, but that was prior to this site being developed. We have not since approached them. We would like to get option A. I think that's a better option, to try to get people out to 56. But we're gonna, we're going to continue to push the, the plan to get one or the other, because it's, it's a safety issue. We would really like to combine, actually, Rocky Mountain Power. You can see they have two driveways. Would like to combine the one and maybe enter off of the B access in the future. So there are some options that we're working on, Councilman Smith.
Okay. I just was a little bit confused, because I thought UDOT had said, yeah, we could do that one.
Yes, they, they told us no, just because of the access spacing and how many there are there, but it's becoming a safety issue. And so we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do to push, push this, to get something.
Yeah, I would like to see A, but if we can, it'd be great to have B, because we need more access.
We're gonna try to get creative and see what we can do.
Maybe get both A and B.
So, probably not. Todd, at this current time, this is only a service access, been granted by UDOT, correct?
Correct. Once we came in and said we were improving it, they said, well, you're no longer, you're no longer accessing it for your well. This is now a different use, and so they turned us down.
Is it because of where we're at, 5600 West, to this intersection, that we don't meet code there? Do you want to say their standards?
It's all of the driveways right there. You have three driveways, and they want us to basically eliminate them all, really. But because they're existing, they have to let us continue to use them, but once we change the use, then they can put the, the requirements on us, so.
So really, I mean, if I'm looking at, as a Rocky Mountain Power, they've got two accesses.
Correct.
If we work with Rocky Mountain to give them an access maybe off of this new A road, they could, you know, it has to be dangerous for them also to pull out on SR 92, too, as a safety concern. That's something probably to address with...
Yeah, so we're working on it. I left a message with Rocky Mountain Power, waiting for them to respond, but I, I think at this point, we've, we've tried to address some of the internal issues. These are our long-term goals that we, as the city, are going to continue to move forward with, so.
So Todd, last time we did a traffic count, I think that was in like 2016, 2017, not 5600, it did not meet warrants, right?
Correct.
Will it, would, do you see it ever? You know, there just, there's a limited amount of traffic coming from the north, because...
With, with all of the development that we see going on around the city hall right here, with the new development here and the possible development right here, I honestly could see Town Center becoming the, the light in the future. I don't know. It just depends on where people will go, and, and honestly, once they put the light in, you'll see people migrate to that location to make that left turn. So one or the other. Like, like you said, Mayor, it's kind of UDOT, we're, we're kind of at their...
So we need to send cookies more often.
Something, something like that.
Brittany.
But we're, we, we understand as a city that this is an issue, so we're kind of thinking outside the box with the developer and, and trying to come up with solutions that will make it better for everyone in there, so.
So Todd, on the proposal, I noticed that if A and B was granted, the developer's taken on the responsibility to install the pavement and to maintain, which would be snow removal, taking care of all the asphalt, everything that would be, and that's WPI, is that correct?
Correct.
As held properties?
Yeah, so if, if, if in fact we get A granted at some point, that would be the developer's responsibility to construct that.
Does it make more sense to figure out what our solution's going to be before we approve something and sell that parcel?
Well, technically, technically, they meet code right now, and so...
Without our part, without our piece, they do?
Correct. Well, without the little sliver with their site plan, no. But with the little sliver they're purchasing, yes, they would meet the code to develop.
Would it make sense to not sell that little sliver until we have a plan? Aren't you glad you're here tonight? Really good to see you.
You're just making it easier for him.
No, if I keep talking, he can't leave.
You know, I, I feel like we have sat down with the developers, and, and they're making, they're making changes. You can see the, the changes they want to, they're proposing over by Wendy's that will in, yeah, make parking and circulation better there. Definitely the stacking on, at Wendy's will improve there. They're reaching out to tenants, and, and I, you know, me as the city engineer, I don't want to get in the middle of fights. What I want to do is, is review things and, and approve them based on them qualifying based on the code. And so what I will say is, the current plan they have, if, if all goes per plan, they meet the code.
So can I just add onto that? So I know they meet the code, and I'm, I'm very supportive of commercial development in our town center, because I think the people of Highland like that. But I guess my worry is, and maybe what I'm echoing Brittany, is if neither A or B comes, then we've got kind of a little traffic mess in there that we really haven't resolved, except for, you know, maybe some Band-Aids. I, I'm, I'm just a little worried about the traffic flow in and out of there. I mean, I'd feel much better if, if somebody could tell us, oh yeah, Rocky Mountain's agreed to A and B, or A. Is that kind of where you're coming from, Councilwoman?
Well, the, the concern is, is with Rocky Mountain Power, it takes time. We all know that, you know, their processes and has to go up the chain, and it, it just takes time. So I, I don't know if and when we will get approval on A. I know that we have a better chance of working with UDOT and getting B approved over time, once we can show that the, now, obviously, we're going to have to work with Rocky Mountain Power to consolidate at least one of those driveways, and they may talk about it. So we're, we're reaching out as the city to Rocky Mountain Power. I think we'll get a little bit more traction as the city than just a developer, so.
So Todd, you, you believe we have a better option getting B than A?
At, at this point, we hold the cards, because we own the property, is my point. We own the property for B right now. It's just a matter of working with UDOT to get that approved.
And when you talk about time, are you talking like weeks or months or a year?
I, I'm talking about months. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight. We, you know, Rocky Mountain takes quite a bit of time. We would have to do a design, go through that process, do some review, do some land trades. It, it will take some time to get one of those options.
But when's our best leverage? I mean, you, you got Scott and Brittany, you know, the city owns some things, we've got to work out something with Rocky Mountain. Once we approve this, some leverage goes away on different, you know, we lose a little leverage.
Correct.
This is a question on a, do we, I don't know that we lose any leverage. Because we're negotiating with Rocky Mountain Power, and that...
Well, what, what Kurt is saying is, is that on the development itself, because today we're talking about selling them a sliver to make their current site work, correct?
Right, but is there anything that we would want them to do that they haven't done?
Let me ask you this. Let's assume Rocky Mountain comes and says, you need to purchase that, that property. Well, if this is not approved, the developer would be more advantageous, no, they might be both ways advantageous to purchase it, but they're going to be, they get a building again.
Right, okay, I get, that, I hadn't foreseen that one, yep.
And Scott, Kurt, council, I don't know if A is an option. This is us thinking outside the box to try to help our, our commercial development to be, to work better together and have better circulation for their customers, so.
I think A's the best, really, but, you know, who knows?
Okay, any other questions for me?
Any questions for the developer?
I guess I want to know what your timeframe is. I mean, if we hold off on this for a couple of months until we can get Rocky Mountain a firm yes or no, how will that affect you?
Yep, great. Great question. Let me just add to that Ryan Hales with Hales Engineering here is also the, I don't know if you're the sole reviewer of this area, but works closely with UDOT in reviewing all of their plans as an independent third party. He is also our consultant, that is by design, that those are related there. So he has a very good feel for the warrants and when things meet it and when things don't. At the time that we were turned down with, with the city and Tubbs' help in, in application, when Rocky Mountain Power or UDOT or anything else says no, all it really means is no now, or no today. And so it just doesn't meet warrants today. We do think that there is new information, there has been an increase in traffic. We do think that there is a much better chance that those things meet warrant today. As concerning your original question about the building, if I can expand the scope just a little bit about the sliver, the sliver of land. The sliver of land really only affects the drive-through capability of the building, and the drive-through, drive, I don't think we're disputing that drive-throughs are actually facilitating traffic in and out of the property as opposed to parking, which creates a little bit more congestion, but it does only affect the drive-through. We would still be electing to move forward with the building immediately, we would just do it without the drive-through. And so we, as owners of the property on both sides, being owners of the current FIS building and this building, believe that, that the traffic flows and traffic plans do work, that in conjunction with FIS and their conscientious management approach with their employees and other things, that they've sort of promised to continue or to step up, or to continue to step up their game. We believe that, that the site works and that the flows will work with or without the drive-through. And so we'd be, we'd be forging ahead regardless, but the sliver does affect the drive-through is where it is.
So maybe, answer to Kim's question is, what happened if we said, let's wait and for 60 days, so we can get better information from UDOT and Rocky Mountain Power, I believe, within that time period? What would happen to your project if we said, let's pause for 60 days and see if we can get some things worked out, and, you know, with that timing?
Yeah, we have, we have tenants that are ready and raring to go, that lease contingent upon entitlement process, one specifically with the drive-through that we would, we would lose in the inability to be able to move forward, but we would still move forward with, with the building now. We can't afford to wait 60 days with the other commitments. I mean, the drive-through commitment is one, we do have other commitments, and the partnership would still proceed.
Did you say we had somebody also here from Myers? Do you want to, I would be interested to know also what you think about this now?
Daniel showed me this plan last Thursday or Friday, and I, I, I like it. The only problem is, it's all predicated on whether we could get A or B. Otherwise, we're putting a lot more cars in that, down into a dead-end section. The other thing I discussed with Daniel is the curb coming in from Wendy's into our area, it's really tight there. Now, over, up just a little. See where it comes? Now go straight across.
I'm struggling.
Over to the left, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Down, now down. See that cat right there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's really tight, and I talked to Daniel about maybe cutting that curb and opening it a little wider on both sides of the entrance. But if, if we can't get those A and B, it's just going to complicate the, the traffic problems over there. And, I mean, that's my opinion.
Marsh, can I, you know, as you look at this new Arctic Circle parking, I know you've had some, when we were speaking, you mentioned that some employees were parking over what currently is, is there? Do you see this plan that's over by the Arctic Circle choking down that area for movement with the way the parking is? I mean, I, I'm just worried about, and I know they're going to be taking out that one little island by the, the Wendy's where, you know, where people are parking up, it kind of opens it up. But is there any concern about that flow of choking things down at all, or does it seem to flow okay for you?
Well, right now, it's just people... Well, right now it's just people come and go. There's really no road markings or anything. I mean, it's, I think by striping that might help. The other thing you've got to be careful of is the condos. There's people that park RVs and
Correct, along that side.
Traders right there. And it can create a traffic problem.
And so, once again, kind of what you're mentioning is your concern if A or B doesn't come, you believe that the flow is still, that the problem by adding another building would just compound the problem?
Yes. Mayor, you were there Saturday when it was pretty busy. I don't know what your experience was. I walked out just to look at things and it's hard for people to get in and out for all the businesses. It's, I think all the businesses are growing around there and there's more and more traffic.
So, okay, it's not for you, it's for somebody else. So WPI, I do have a question on, with this new parking arrangement, I think it'll be a little bit more difficult for people to randomly park RVs and trailers there. Is there, you'd have signage, you know, like no customer-only parking or something like that, I presume?
Yes, the, yeah, good question. A couple of things. We have since last meeting and actually a little bit prior to that, have our staff at WPI working with the homeowners association to close that gate. There's not an approved access there. I think if staff informed, it was meant to only be sort of an emergency access. So with that being shut off, one of the other mentions of staff that we would use would probably stripe the curb red along that west side of that drive aisle to indicate no sort of parking through there. But obviously with with the fishbone or the parking striped the way it is, north and south orientation, doesn't provide much room or if any for RVs or camp trailers or anything else to park, they'd have to find other solutions for that. We do, I think as stated, have an agreement with Wendy's to do that. And we would do that toward the north portion now. We do think that to the extent that Wendy's backs up occasionally even out of the, out of their entrance, at least currently occasionally, that that'll allow flow through and relieve a little bit of that bottleneck in that, at that junction. We did, over the last, or since our last meeting, have our staff go out there on every two-hour increments on alternating days, or not alternating days, alternating time, alternating two-hour blocks each day to look at the stack in the FIS drive-through to see how much and when and when it overflowed and how much it overflowed by. Pleased to report a couple of things. One is that in the last week, it had occurred three times from the increments we were there. Out of those times, it went to eight and nine cars was the total count. And so the provided stacking is a total of eight and so we only had one or two cars in transition. The other thing that more importantly perhaps that we're pleased to note is that FIS employees were already out there managing that. And so I think that shows that they're, whatever's happened in the past, I think they're extremely, or much more conscientious today in having people run out there and manage that traffic. Yeah.
Sorry. By the way, council, council members, this is the chart that he's talking about. That should be right in front of y'all.
I have another question, but this might be for Rob actually. Although I think it's interesting when you look at the car stacking that it seems like it's most busy on Wednesday, which is coincidentally or not the day that our high school kids don't have school. Rob, can I ask you a question maybe? Can you explain to us what, what our options are here or what we are required to approve versus not? Because I am pro-business. I am definitely pro-drive-through, but I want to respect the businesses we have. So what, tell us.
Of course. Great question. So, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but their proposal will meet code for a commercial building in this lot. Because it does that, we are obligated as an administrative matter to approve it. The issue comes up is they're also wanting to build a drive-through. Now, that is dependent on the city council's decision as a legislative matter to sell them that sliver of property. However, they don't need that piece of property to build the building to code. And you've heard him explain that, make sure I don't say this incorrectly, but they would say, give us the approval so we can build the building even without a drive-through. And that may be that they build a building that has no drive-through or they build a building that has a drive-through window that just doesn't do anything until and unless the city decides to give them the property. The fact that they don't have a drive-through doesn't limit the fact that they are entitled to build a commercial building in that area. They've met parking. There are parking and, you know, car issues, traffic issues in there. But they meet the parking requirements. They meet circulation requirements. They meet square footage and, you know, all of that. So the city council has to approve it since they're requesting that. You don't have to sell them the strip of land for the drive-through. That's the council's decision.
So now, let me ask you, on the site plan we have before us has a drive-through. So they don't have a plan before the city council that is only a building only. This one shows a drive-through. So you know, what do you say, meet code? At this current time, if we don't sell that sliver, they don't meet code?
Councilmember, also, there is a stipulation that is included in this where if the council does not approve the purchase agreement tonight, the site plan will be adjusted to not include that piece of land.
That's up to us to, that's a stipulation, right?
Yes, that's correct.
It's not unlike a final plat for a subdivision where the developer comes in and says, here's the layout. And then the council gives their final approval and they come back with final construction drawings for, you know, roads and utility layouts that just Todd and, you know, the engineering staff review and approve. The council doesn't review that. It's just make sure it meets code. So you could approve and they're requesting that you approve it with or without a drive-through. And the stipulation is, if you're going to sell us the property, great, we'll do it with a drive-through. If you're not going to sell us the property, great, we'll do it without the drive-through. One or the other. That's the application.
So as the city attorney, you're saying that this meets the town center code and so we need, what they're proposing because they meet the parking, the landscaping, you know, everything on that, even though we might have concerns with traffic circulation, you're stating we need to approve it because it meets that code?
Correct. It's not unlike other matters where sometimes residents have issues with new developments coming in that result in increased traffic impacts to them. At some level, the city has to approve things because people are entitled to build, to develop their property. If the city said, you're allowed to do X, Y, Z and they say, I want to do Y, we say, okay, you get to do it.
Theoretically, can they build a smaller building that still has a drive-through without our sliver?
Potentially. I'm not sure how that square footage would work, but I would assume they could probably reduce it and it might be less advantageous to them. Maybe there's some tenant issue there, but.
We're putting in four tenants? I believe there are five.
Approximately four, we expect four tenants. Yes, the building can fit up to five tenants. But as noted in the code, we're provided across the entire site, including Marsh's property for the whole shopping center. There's more than twice the required code in parking. This isn't a parking issue. There's an isolated incidence. Would characterize as an isolated incident with a FIS drive-through. There's nothing wrong with the site design. There's nothing wrong with the flow of traffic. There is an isolated incident in managing a drive-through that no one expected to sort of spill over. And I think under the circumstances, we've provided and met multiple times with tenants, adjacent landowners, staff and consultants at our expense and time to do the best by everyone. It's a difficult discussion to have about a flow-through, overstacking of parking, for example, with Marsh. And no disrespect to Marsh, he and I have a great relationship and have had over the years. But on both sides of the property, where the overflow is happening is on our property. Okay? It does impact everyone. We recognize that. We're not trying to be inconsiderate corporate neighbors to people. We also have an interest and investment in Marsh's success. But it is affecting our property and our tenants perhaps more than Marsh, and I would say more than Marsh. I know his customers parked there. But he got what he bargained for when he bought the property and decided where his parking was going to be, which was to the west of, east, excuse me, east of his property. If his customers did park there, they would have no problem or no conflict with the drive-through. Now, we're not requiring that that happen. We do have cross-parking agreements. However, that being said, as bundle of rights for the properties, the properties, each parcel's required with agreements even with Marsh to have their own parking sufficient for their uses. We've provided on our buildings, including the one behind Wendy's, knowing originally that we didn't think that the city code was adequate from a practical standpoint, having all the properties that we have. We've always overparked in consideration of consumers and being able to track the right tenants. And so we don't mean any sort of disrespect. We've done everything that we can do to manage the situation. We also believe that it's an isolated incidence and that the discussion that keeps reoccurring is how to effectively manage an extreme situation. We don't believe that extreme situation is going to continue. Of course, that's a belief. That's a projection. There's no way to tell that. FIS is opening up their lobby June 1st. We put as much pressure as we could as landlords and influencers to say, hey, let's open up beforehand. They said it's a corporate issue. They'll see what they can do. They also stated however, that with the lobby opening up, that somewhere between 15, 20% historically pre-pandemic of their sales go into the lobby versus the drive-through. With 10 cars, right, if we provided stacking of eight, 10 cars would stack two on the outside. Opening up the lobby would, according to their prior numbers, would automatically reduce that, right, in a month. The building's not going to be up in a month. But should it overflow occur before then, the statistics say besides the Wednesday, we noticed that it was interestingly stacking, it seemed like when school gets out, right? Shuffling kids, going to sports, whatever, doing those times. But they are isolated incidences throughout the day, throughout the week. They're also isolate, we believe, isolated incidences in terms of a seasonal effect with the pandemic. And so we have provided more than two times parking across the entire site and believe that we adequately meet and can conduct tenant businesses there without without unhappy customers.
So I would like to say, I don't, I realize that you're not trying to cause problems. I realize you want all of the businesses to succeed. And just so you know, we're not trying to cause you problems either. This is just how we are, right McKay? So just know that it's not.
Personal.
Yeah, it's not. It's just, we like to protect our businesses that we have.
Sure, we understand.
So just, I want you to know that too.
Well, let me make a comment too, because I'd like to add on to that. So we had three or four citizens from a neighbor complain about the performance center. When that went in, I said, why don't we have the parking in front of that building instead of behind? And I was told, they meet code, so you have to vote for it. That's unfortunate because it's caused nothing but problems since. I mean, the people park over in Ace Hardware. They park up and down the street. They park everywhere except behind that building. And so I think as a council, even though all these things meet code and we're very supportive of you coming in with commercial. I was on the council in 2013 when we surplused the Hudson City Water building there so you could build that building here and I supported 100%. But I just worry that it seems like we don't have the right to kind of anticipate problems. And if we can have some assurance that either A or B will happen, I have no problem with this, but without A or B, yeah, maybe when the pandemic's over and they won't be so stacked up at FIS, but it seems like we're just saying, okay, because it meets code, we're just going to create another problem. And I just have a problem with that personally because I can, there's so many examples of where that's happened in the city and I support this 100%, but if we could get some assurance that we'll have either A or B, to me, it's a no-brainer. But I worry about voting for this now and not getting A or B. I just have trouble with that. I don't know. Maybe I'm the only one on the council, but it seems like Brittany has a little trouble with it.
Yeah, but perhaps, perhaps Mayor, I could suggest that we'd hear from Ryan Hales about the likelihood. Now, we can't guarantee A or B. I think as we've already discussed, what we can guarantee or assure is that we'd continue to work on it. In the previous applications, we paid again at our own expense to explore option B as the sort of primary access. Like you said, that was the plan when the land was surplused in 2013. And so in getting together with staff, we had previously identified, but getting together with staff over the last couple of weeks, sort of there was a resurgence in that A is really a better overall option and that we'll have Ryan address this, the likelihood or the staff's desire to have a traffic light at 5600 West. And so that's where the Rocky Mountain Power and sort of the preferential options come from. But what you can, what we can, the only thing that we can assure you is that we'd continue to work on it. It's in our interest. It's in everyone's best interest. We don't have a problem. So saying that we'd continue to work on that. And again, we only see, when UDOT says no, we only see a no today. Okay? There are ways to meet this. We'd like to have perhaps Ryan address that to, you know, allow you to fill that through a little bit. And again, as not just our traffic engineer, but as UDOT's consultant as well.
Ryan, do you want to share your point of view on that? And while you're coming up, I put out to council, we've got two separate decisions. One is this, to approve the site plan. The other is the property sale. So those will be two different votes. Go ahead.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, my name is Ryan Hales from Hales Engineering. As we've looked at the site, obviously the option A is a great option for us. There was a recent warrant study that was completed here and in reviewing that warrant study, it didn't quite meet the warrants at 5600 West. We do review a lot of those for UDOT. I don't speak for UDOT. I can't speak for UDOT and I want to make that very clear. I can't commit to anything. But as far as the warrants being met, if that road, option A, the east-west road just north of Myers going westbound, if that did extend to 5600, you would have more traffic going out to 56 and you would likely meet the warrants. So it's kind of a little bit of a double-edged sword. It's a great improvement that we all think is the best improvement and we would all love to see that go in. There's a little bit of a chicken and egg that's going to have to occur and it's unfortunate that it comes down to that. But when we look at this, we think there are some great options that if we can get A and get the traffic over to 56, that signal will come a lot sooner than it would without it.
Okay. And we're working on that.
I just wanted to respond to you, Scott. I think I definitely seen the concern with not knowing 100% of options A and B. But then also I see the other side of the concern of, you know, we asked the question, what would happen if we hold off? And that concern is that they'll lose a tenant and we could potentially lose a drive-through. Which I don't know about you, but for me is much needed here in Highland. And so that is one of my big concerns is losing a potential tenant and losing a drive-through as well.
So for the item number five, it's about the pad.
Correct. And that's, and that's why I was going to kind of address this.
They're all three linked.
They're all three linked. But at the same time, I put, there's two hats. You got the head of the property owner, that they've come in good faith. They own the property. They, as they bought that property, they've had a vision, want to put and they've come to the city. Now, I agree that to get the drive-through at this time, they need to purchase a little sliver of property from the city. But like Spinn mentioned, they can go ahead and build the building, put a window there and hopefully in the future. That's one option. We could hold off and say, okay, we're not going to sell the property until we can see if we can get A or B. But as a property owner, they're probably entitled to this building. I mean, you know, by code, they're entitled to be able to build this building. The question where I think it comes to the council is, are we willing to sell that extra land that helps them facilitate a drive-through? And so, and like you mentioned, that's a different decision coming down.
They are tied and I'm hoping that that decision is going to be way simpler.
We all understand. I think for me, the one, and I'm going to maybe kind of refer back to Rob, our attorney, one concern I have is, once we approve this, I worry that option number A urgency or trying to work through it also dissipates, or the workability, because it might be that they come and Utah Power says they want to have X dollars to buy it. Well, for the city, you know, and maybe that's where Westfield would come and say, yeah, it's worth us to do that because it helps our whole development. That was, you know, if you don't approve it there, they're much more advantageous to try to want to negotiate and get it versus, and hopefully both ways, they'd be advantageous to want to negotiate. But that's, it's just hard because we don't know what that party of Utah Power is thinking. I don't think they're going to just give the ground.
But that's what Todd was saying, we would trade for the land we own where B is, because we own that land, and it looks to be roughly equivalent and maybe even...
In size. But that's a question. So, that's a city property.
Right.
This is for a private entity. If we trade that, is that something that we're going to have to maintain that road going into this then? Is that, you know, in the agreement now, they have to maintain it? But I'm just, I mean, if we trade it, I recognize it helps businesses in Highland, they're paying property tax, they're paying sales tax. I mean, but that's some of the leverage that we lose a little bit.
Yes. But I believe the agreement covers either A or B. Isn't that true? If the A road goes in, WPI would maintain that.
Correct.
Or the B road.
Who buys the A road?
Huh?
Who buys the property for the A road?
We would swap, because we need the access to our well, and that road, B provides it.
But as a city, we have access to our well at this current time.
Right. So, but if we swapped, then it, there's no harm to the city.
And it does benefit. I understand what you're saying.
And it's better for everybody. So, I don't see that as a harm. I think it's a council decision whether to sell the sliver, and there may be good reasons for doing that or not, but...
Is this contract from WPI with FIS, is this something that is a legal contract that's enforceable? Have you seen it, Rob?
You're referring to the letter?
Yeah, that you've signed and...
Yeah, the letter is a cooperative agreement, but there is stronger teeth in the lease agreement that we have with them in terms of, you know, sort of not providing nuisance to neighbors and these kinds of things. There are things from a landlord perspective that we can do. That's why it was just sort of a letter agreement, because we think that the teeth is already in the agreement. And so, it was a cooperative effort to sort of say, hey, we're all on the same side here. FIS is willing to cooperate, willing to do these things. The teeth is in the lease that we have with them.
Marsh, I would be interested to know how easy you think it is to kind of retrain customers to do a different behavior? So, if I'm driving to go to Myers, I'm going to park wherever's closest regardless of what a sign says. Do you think that, like, for example, with Wendy's, I can't tell you how many times I parked in those stupid parking spots in front, and then I get blocked in, and then I do it again the next time. So, I mean, maybe that's just me, user error. But do you feel like the education piece of this and the signage piece is enough to really solve the problem? I mean, I guess the answer is no, because you said you think we need A or B to make it feasible.
I, we can try with the education.
Marsh, if you could come up to the mic.
You know, signs, stop signs, maybe widening that entrance to the whole shopping center there.
So, Marsh, there's one customer, I really wonder how they're going to park, and they seem to come every lunch, and they seem to bring two big vehicles, and it happens to be our fire department. I mean, and I'm going, they all park along where the garbage is and that, you know, if they put this parking in, I'm going, now where's our emergency vehicles? Are they going to be able to make that turn to get into parking lot? When you talk about training, how's our public safety getting there to park to get lunch? I mean, the whole time we kept saying, we redoing this, I kept going, those fire trucks, where are they going to park?
They can walk.
Yeah, they do park out there.
They'll have to walk.
That's a tough one. I don't know. One of the, the biggest complaints we had from our customers were those that pulled in front of our store. There's parking in front of our store, our handicap parking is there, and when it backed up, those people couldn't back out into, half that driveway is my property, they could not back out. Some said they waited 10, 15, 20 minutes, you know, when it was stacked up. Is that a COVID thing? I don't know. We'll see what happens this summer with FIS, but...
So, Marsh, how long ago, though? I mean, have you been noticing that in the last month where they're backing down by in front of your handicap?
No.
And that was kind of back, that March, April, where everything was just shut down, wasn't?
Well, it continued into the summer, but everything was shut down still. So, that is a good point. I forgot about that. Where are the fire trucks going to park?
Where's Chief Thompson when we need him? Check your email.
Anyway, does that help?
I mean, it helps, except for it doesn't solve the problem.
No.
I mean, I just feel like, from what Rob said, it seems like there are not a lot of options.
So, do we want to vote on item five and then continue discussing the sliver piece?
Yes.
Separately.
Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make it. Mayor, I move the city council accept the findings, approve the site plan for Highland Town Plaza West pad subject to 13 stipulations, which is minus number 11 recommended by the staff.
And then minus, and number seven to be replaced by seven through 14.
Say that one more time.
And number seven to be replaced by seven through 14.
Oh, and staff recommends that stipulation number seven be replaced, the following stipulation, I guess the other stipulations are...
Yeah, seven to 14.
Other than number 11.
Yeah, other than number 11.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim. We'll start with Scott.
Of course you would.
I love it, Scott. I love it. Yes.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
That was just, I'm going down the line.
I know, I'm just teasing.
That's all right. It was a happy coin getting, that's what it was. Okay, now we're on to item six, which is the declaration of surplus property, and that's the sliver. And that is legislative. That is totally your call. Discussion.
I guess, sorry, this is just a mini presentation that we do have to go over, just to clarify this process. The action item for tonight would be just declaring it as surplus property. We do need to hold a public hearing for that, and that would be held at the May 4 city council meeting, and then the official approval of the purchase contract as well. And so...
We're not actually approving it. We're just declaring...
To my understanding, is that correct, Nathan? This is just declaring it as surplus property is this resolution that you're approving?
That kind of gives us more time.
So technically, yes, this is not approving the official contract, it's just declaring it as surplus.
So, and the contract is going to be legislative as well? Is that correct?
Yes, to my, yes.
Rob, is that correct? It's legislative on the purchase contract?
So, this would buy a little bit of time to find out if there's any word from Rocky Mountain Power.
So, why wouldn't we just continue this? I mean, we approved the site plan. Why couldn't you continue it till we find out if we're going to get any cooperation from Rocky Mountain or UDOT? Because I still think you need A or B, especially when you have the drive-in.
Correct. So, the action here is a resolution saying we're going to surplus it. The intent would be to put it on the May 4 agenda. We could kick that can down the road if we wanted to, if come May 4th, we don't have any word, or at the May 4 meeting, we could just say, continue it. So, we could pull it from the agenda before the meeting, or we could continue it. But in either case, let's presume that Rocky Mountain Power, it's, that's, light isn't going to get built overnight, but Rocky Mountain Power, through some miraculous instance of bureaucratic efficiency, could say, yes, we're interested in this, we want to move on it. In which case, if we delayed this approval, then we'd have to wait another... There's a time period wait, too. It's like a 10-day notification period, is that right?
For the public hearing, we sent out the public hearing notices for this, and so, to my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, Rob or Nathan, we could do all three of these in the same meeting, just as long as we do it chronologically, just pass that resolution to declare it a surplus, hold the public hearing, and then approve the purchase, if that's how you would like to do it.
We could continue this.
Rather than pushing it off another meeting after the fact for the public hearing.
So, Mayor, if we surplus a property, do we have to sell surplus property?
No. No.
No, but we could, to her point, continue this and then pass this and...
And do all three at one time.
And then approve the contract.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to doing any of it, but I'd just like to know if we had A or B.
Is there, as long as you're coming up, I'll give you another question to answer on your way. There's no harm then in approving, like, declaring it a surplus property today. It will just put us one step further down the road, but with no obligation on May 4th.
Correct. And I would recommend that the council, at the very least, vote to approve the surplusing process, meaning you start the process, you approve the calling of the hearing, you approve the notice, you approve the potential surplusing and sale, you ultimately reserve the decision to sell after the public hearing. But today, you need to, I would recommend, that you approve the kind of beginning of that process.
And why is that? Timing?
Timing, so that the hearing is not delayed. I mean, you certainly could delay it if you decided to. That is a legislative call. If this is something that you want to get resolved quickly, however, it just delays every, you know, two weeks for each council meeting before this can be taken care of.
Would it be true, if we surplus it, we allow WPI to be a little closer, even if, let's assume as a council, we said, hey, we're not going to prove it until we know if A or B's done, but we've got to the point, and so if it does get a letter that A can be done, we've moved it up a little closer for WPI to be able to move forward versus having to come through the steps again.
Correct.
Is that correct?
We have a very specific process we have to go through to surplus property. One is declaring it, adopting by resolution, and then holding that public hearing, two separate steps.
So, it seems to me to make sense to do that part of it tonight. Did we have our public hearing?
No, there's no public hearing tonight. We had an earlier public hearing, but not on this.
Well, you can't sell it tonight because there hasn't yet been a public hearing.
You have to do the resolution first.
Yep.
Mayor, are you ready for a motion?
Sure, please.
I move that the city council approve the resolution declaring 2,433 square feet of public, public feet, public, public property surplus for the purpose of disposal.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim, not Kim, Brittany. We are starting with Kim.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Scott.
No.
So, that passes for one. Okay, we're on to item number, sorry?
Nothing, I'm sorry.
We're on to item number seven, a minor subdivision, final plat Highland Town Center Plaza subdivision.
Okay, this is the last item for this development. The request for the final plat for this subdivision encompasses what is in the red border. This is three separate lots, and they're just, they're making the current site plan that was just approved a lot, and then they're just fixing up the lot lines on existing lots that are in previous plats, but they're just reorganizing it essentially. This is the final plat. Lot one is what the site plan is, and then we have lot two, and then lot three on the southeast side. And we, as the staff, recommend that the city council accept the findings and approve the proposed plat with these following stipulations. Number four, that's that same, that the lot one will be modified if the purchase agreement doesn't go through. And then, we also had some comments come back from Public Works after the fact about we have a water line that would be right on, basically, they have to reroute our water line, and so it's just verifying that that easement will be recorded on the plat and that will have to be added after this meeting. And then, a fire hydrant to be able to access that line.
Is that it?
Yes, that is it.
Any questions? Then, somebody want to make a motion on that one?
I can make a motion.
I just, I'm happy to, but I just, I didn't want to do all the motions tonight.
I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the Highland Town Plaza subdivision plat subject to the four stipulations recommended by the planning commission and the additional two stipulations recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, second by Tim. Motion by Kim. It has a nice ring. And first vote is Brittany.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously. All right. You're on, actually, you're starting, right, Kelly, on this one?
Yes.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Okay, on to the next development. This is 10,700, which some people may know as Apple Creek, but it is now 10,700, so we're kind of getting to that transition in names. This is a vicinity map of where it's located. It's just east of where we are right now. This is the final plat. Just to clarify, this is changed from what we've seen before. As in the staff report, it's, the commercial district is as parcel A. They since submitted an updated plat that has that commercial district as two lots that would be recorded with this, just to ensure that they had those office pads on the plat. Okay, freezing. This has been kind of confusing as going through it, and so I tried to break it down into what will be happening with the residential. In the past, the residential was presented as being in different phases, but since the developer has decided to make the residential construction all be in one phase, and that phase will include, oh, it makes me sad that we can't really see that visual, but the brownstone parking, so each unit is required to have three parking stalls per unit, and so there are two for the resident, and then you have one visitor parking stall. It's the same for all of the units. The brownstones, because they are smaller, the visitors' parking will be in this parking lot just east of the brownstone units, and there are 10 brownstone units, thus 10 visitor stalls, and so that will be constructed with, when the residential units are constructed, so part of phase one. And then, along with that, there's that fire turn around that's just south of the parking stall, so it'll just stub out a little bit, and then emergency access that's included on the north end with the bollards over to Ace Hardware that will be part of this whole construction part of the residential phase. And then, we have also stipulated as staff that the parkway detail that needs to be finished along Alpine Highway, that that also be finished at the same time as the residential units. The commercial, which is phase two, and the timing of that is just contingent upon people coming in and requesting a site plan approval, and that is when the official access to Alpine Highway will be built and when that median removal will occur, just as stipulated by UDOT. McKay is here. He discussed things with me over the phone of different possibilities, which I'm sure he can explain after I present. And we, as staff... And we, as staff, just recommend that the city council accept the findings and approve this final plat, subject to these five stipulations. Number four is just stipulating that the parkway detail be done along Alpine Highway with the residential units, and then five is to ensure, just because the parking at the brownstone units has been such a controversial issue, just to make sure that that is recorded on the plat as well. And McKay is also here, if you would like to hear from him.
Council, would you like to hear from McKay, or do you have questions for Kelly?
I have a question. So, there's a big difference in phasing from the preliminary plat approval that we did and the final plat, can you explain the reasoning why you're doing that?
Yeah, we, so originally, if you guys remember, we had it broken down into three phases actually in the residential, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And it just becomes a function of mobilization, and so, the market is good right now, and so we're looking at it, we're saying we may as well just put the entire road in, rather than finishing a phase, pulling our crews off, coming back out, finishing another phase, pulling them off, and bringing them back on again.
So the commercials, all of a sudden, down the road a ways, does that mean it won't happen someday, or what? I'd just like to understand that better, because it was in a couple phases, too, I thought.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the only adjustment that we're making here is that the way, and this was my understanding of how we'd phased this before, was that we broke up the residential into phases, that was, that was really the bulk of how the, how the development was phased, this is really broken up into two phases, rather than, I want to say we had four before.
Yes.
And so, if anything, this would actually accelerate the commercial, because rather than being able to go in and do maybe 10 lots, and then stop, and then do another 10 lots, and stop, and another 10 lots, we're putting in, and Kelly, I don't know if there's a way to pull up the site plan.
Oh.
Usually there's a clicker on here, or a.
This is a plat, I don't have the site plan in the.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Sorry about that.
The, it, what we're, basically what we're doing is we're putting in the entire, the entire residential infrastructure, and then, one of the other reasons actually that we've decided to do that is that, in talking with Todd, we recognize that we're probably going to have to loop the water system. Does anybody have a laser pointer, by any chance? I might.
In that, there you go.
There is one in here.
I'll do my best to keep the mouse over.
See, oh, there we go, okay. So, to answer your question, Scott, originally we had planned on coming in here and coming up and stopping, and this was phase one.
Yes.
And then this, I want to say was phase two.
Right.
And I think this was another phase, and then that was another phase.
Right.
So I think we had one, two, like, it was like three, maybe we had, yeah, four and five, or something like that, but instead, what we're doing now is we're, we recognize in order to put this in, we get to a certain point with the, where the water would have to be looped back out to SR 74, and so, we just figured, look, rather than coming in, stopping, coming in, stopping, we'll just put the infrastructure all the way into here, that way this whole section is improved, and then we'll loop the water from here to here, and what I understand that staff is, is asking for is that since, since we are going ahead and doing this, they're saying, okay, you guys need to put in those 10 stalls, correct? Which, I recognize that's what we agreed to when we first started this, if we're going to do the brownstones, and then with that, we put in, you know, the bollards and stuff like that, that we're going into that access, and so, that's everything that's going to be going into phase, into phase one now. So, in answer your question, Scott, no, it's not, it's not in any way slowing down the commercial, if anything, I would say it's probably accelerating that process.
McKay, a question, so, when we approved it, you had the first phase, I think, went to buildings 11 and 20, so it was 16 units.
That's right.
And then I think in the second phase, when we approved it, was you were supposed to then finish the road all the way out to SR 73, out to the Alpine Highway.
Is that what it was? I don't remember that one.
So as this phasing changes, I noticed that, that was one of the things, I'm going, okay, we had phase, you know, two is where, as the city council, we put in the motion that that's when it would be approved. One, you know, one concern, and we don't have our fire chief or anyone from the fire department, is now we've built 42 units, and it has a cul-de-sac versus where, you know, is that a, the safety concern of not moving all the way through to, you know, SR 73 to get a second access, is that, I think that was, we discussed that as a council at the time, we wanted that second access to come at phase two, which was, which was your residential phase.
Yeah, I, you know, and I'd have to, I don't, I apologize, I don't know my civil engineer here tonight, but I, what we had planned right now is, is doing a temporary coldy that's large enough to be able to facilitate fire, and Todd, if you, did we lose Todd? There he is. If, if, you know, from what I understand, that meets code, to do a temporary turnaround, the other option would be like an all-weather surface or something that we put out.
Why couldn't you just build that in? I mean, from SR 74, if you.
Cost, I mean, basically what we're doing, again, rather than just coming up and stopping here, which was what we had agreed to do, we're carrying all of this infrastructure on the front end, while we go through and sell each one of these. So basically, we go get a loan to do all the infrastructure, and then we have what is like commonly referred to as a light, like a revolving line of credit on each one of these homes, and so, we have to sell each one of these homes in order to pay off the improvements.
But you're not going to put your access to SR 74 until you do your commercial, then?
Yes, that's right, that's right. Now, yes, that would come in phase two.
I also should say, Chief Thompson did review these plans, and he gave us back comments, and part of them was just to make sure that that did have sufficient fire turnaround, and they have met that.
So, Todd, is there a concern with having 42 units built and just having it be a cul-de-sac? Is that, I mean, is that, have we done other subdivisions similar to this, this meeting? I mean, we have the fire department, it sounds like they've signed off on it.
Yes, we've, we've done similar situations throughout the city, knowing that it's future development, so we consider it temporary, and, and in this situation, we'd feel comfortable.
Okay.
What I talked to Kelly about today, that what we probably ought to do is, is just build that, part of that asphalt parking area right there, and then they actually have a turnaround, so, and, and just make sure it's on the plat, so it's, it's, it's the temporary turnaround, so, yep.
So Kelly, we don't have a drawing, I think you sent one earlier out by email, but if we approve something tonight, how do we, do we need to make it part of the motion, that the brownstone 10 parking stalls and the bollards and the landscaping going into the Ace Hardware area needs to be approved, is that?
Those are stipulations in the staff report, as those brownstones being included in the recorded plat, and so they would need to add that before we send it to the county.
McKay, a couple other questions.
Sure.
I just want to make sure, your plan up here, I remember when we approved it, is it the maximum, you can't, you know, is, they have to be two units, it's not going to be like a fourplex or a threeplex, or is that still the plan? I'm not sure if anything changed?
Sorry, that was loud. Yes, in fact, so, if you remember from our plan, right now this is laid out where each one of these are individual lots. Basically, we had some of these that were actually shared a common wall, but that, there were never more than two units.
Yeah.
That's one, I went back and I read through all the stipulations, that's one of the things that's stipulated. We actually, if possible, we would, we would kind of prefer to do all these as detached, so none of them are attached, so they would all be freestanding little, you know, single-family deals, and you wouldn't have any attached. These, however, will be, those, those still.
Those will be two, two, and two, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
I imagine we don't need to do any change in the, if they're going to do single-family, or if you want to say single units, that's, that's.
Well, okay, the note on the plat, and in the stipulation, is just that there are no more than two units that are attached, so.
So is there basements with these? I noticed they're 3170s, they have a basement, and is that two-car garage you're showing in your drawings, is that the single unit that has two cars, or is it the two cars shared?
No, if you, did you guys have a chance to review the floor plans and elevations?
I looked at the drawings.
Yeah, so, if you look at each one of those units, every single one of them has a two-car garage, plus they have, every unit has a two-car garage, plus that one additional stall.
Wow.
And then, and then these, again, this is, this is, when I say consistent, this is exactly what it, what it is that we had when we got the PD application approved, we haven't changed anything. It's, and so, all of these, they don't have that, it's a two-car garage, it does not have that extra stall on the side of each unit, and so that's where those 10 stalls come from.
I know we talked about timing with residential and the commercial parking issues, and how would we kind of use overflow of the commercial parking at night to help with those parking issues, do you think that'll be a problem, putting in all the residential at first and then the commercial later, not having that parking to overflow to?
I don't, only because, you know, the absorption, we hope the absorption on these units is quick, but, I mean, it could be 12 months to 24 months before we absorb all of the units, and so, we've got enough time, just so you're aware, like, we, we started working, we, part of the stipulation that we had coming back in here was that we need to have elevations for you guys to review, and so, we, we were scrambling to come up, I mean, we have to start with floor plans, make them from scratch, and have all of that stuff ready, and I think that they turned out dynamite, by the way, and colors and all that stuff aren't, aren't there yet, we still have some VE stuff that we need to do, but, but as soon as, now that we're to that phase, we can start working on the commercial, we've already started working on the commercial, we're working with tenants, we've got two or three that we've already been contacting in terms of the retail on the ground floor, and so, we're, just so you know, Scott, we're working on that, we don't want it to sit, we're working on it round the clock, doesn't make any sense for us to sit, and so the plan is, Kim, is to go in and start, you know, obviously put in the infrastructure, and as we sell, I think it's going to give us enough time to be able to start working on the commercial, and have some of that come back in, so.
Just add a question, is Marcia still involved in this, or is that, so she, so that, I was, you know, she'd been around, you know, coming to a lot of the meetings, I wasn't sure if that had changed in the ownership.
And I have my other partner here.
Todd's here, he's also, I think we.
Todd Anberry.
Yeah, he's also a Highland resident, so.
Also a Highland resident, and decades of experience in doing this kind of stuff, is very, very good, so.
I was curious on your design, we talked quite a bit about it when we were approving it, you have the garages that are kind of, you know, sticking out, and it looks like it's more where the, the units kind of raise up, it's, it's, it's unique, you know, and, okay, it's different.
So one of the things that we did not want to do is, we could have built over the garage and added more square footage, it just, we didn't want them to look like 90-foot-long milk cartons, and if, if we, if we built them a two-story thing that went straight back as a total rectangle, you wouldn't have any variation in the elevations, I actually think that this breaks things up much better, so you don't have just a stacking blocks going, going in and around, I, I think it'll actually give a lot of relief, so.
McKay, isn't this such a great time for you to be building this project, like, with housing the way it is?
It actually is a good time.
Aren't you so glad it took so long?
I'm so happy you didn't get any more.
We discussed it today for taking this long.
Because you would have had this approved two years ago, sold it for some price, you'd probably hit the market just about right.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for all the, all the torture you put me through, I really do appreciate it.
You're kind, you're all kind.
Any other questions?
I think he's answered my questions. I, I'd just like to make a kind of philosophical statement, because I guess I'm oftentimes the outlier, but, one, I think you really worked hard, McKay, to make this a, a project that, that works with the city, and, and I appreciate that, I mean, certainly the density dropped rather dramatically from, I think, 220 originally, down to 42, and I think that's good. The problem I have as elected official, and, and I, I really, you know, I kind of understand how it all works, because I've been here a while, but I always really have a hard time when the city attorney stands up and says, well, you have to approve this, and you have to do that, and then we get a survey that the people don't like the city council, because we're forced to do things that maybe we don't feel real comfortable with sometimes, and I haven't heard anybody in the city, yet, unless they're, they live in this area, that really like the high density in the center of the town, and they worry a lot about traffic and all these things, and I hear people getting almost frantic about it because of the big boom and things, I mean, and so, as an old-time Highland citizen, I just have a hard time with some of this, because I'm not so sure we've always made the best decisions, looking at possible future ramifications, and yet the people hold us responsible, but then we're told at the same time, we really don't have a say in the matter. So I find that really frustrating as elected official, because the people that elect us think we do have more say, and certainly we've changed the zone, we've had say, and you've, you've really worked with us good, and I appreciate it, and I'm going to support this, but at the same time, there's a lot of concern about density in the center of the city and traffic, and I think it's getting to be horrendous, and I just don't know the answer, that's why I held off on this other project, I just think you need better access, because why create more problems for the future, and I just, you know, that's kind of my philosophy.
Well, and, I don't know if you want to comment for me on that, and I probably don't, I, and I, we're, I understand your position, don't know that I would want to be in it, and I get how difficult it is, and often, I get that oftentimes you are stuck with what code is, and it's either approve it or get sued, I totally get it, and hopefully, as we develop this project, and the people see the, what it is that we're developing, number one, they recognize what we regard as the major concessions that we made at the, not just the request, but almost the insistence of the city council, we've moved pretty, pretty dang far, and I think as we, as we develop it, whether it's the open space that, that we're building in here, the commercial that we're building, the quality of the development, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're about in the mid-sevens now, and the high sixes to mid-sevens is where we anticipate these will be, but that, that doesn't just speak to the market, it speaks to the quality of product that we want to deliver, so, this is, this is pushing cost per square foot, I think it's helping the people in the immediate area, I think it's a development that when we're done, people are going to be like, it's really, they did a great job on it, we, we hope that they say that.
So when you start this project, the two homes on SR 74, do they go?
They get demoed.
Right, right at the start?
Yeah, well, it's likely that they will. I don't think that we, and, that's, I mean, it's one of the things Todd and I need to talk about, and Steve, of course, who's here, but, it's, we, we want the face of the project to project, project well off SR 74 as we start developing.
I would think you would want that.
Yeah.
McKay, I, I think you did have some floor plans, are you going to have a master bedroom on the main floor on these, or?
Oh.
On the main, on the main floor?
Yeah, if you go through and you look at those floor plans, we've got a master on the main, on one of the three, we've tried to get all of the units with three bedrooms, an office, and some type of vaulted space in the unit themselves, and so, you have something that sets it apart from the rest of the product that's been built around, we also, to your point, have a basement that we'll be building, probably unfinished, but they'll have the option to finish it, and that will add another bedroom and another rec room downstairs, and so, you know, we started at about 2,400 square feet on the smallest unit, and then the other two are about 25 to 26 above grade, with the basement, we're at about 34, and then we go up to about 3,600 square feet, and these are big, these good-sized units.
No, and, you know, I've always come out there, I'm a really, I really support the large lots, I think, as we've, you know, tried to do any of the votes, I try to favor, but I remember whenever I first got in council, this is, what do we do for our kids? Well, and we've also had a lot of comments back from those who are, you know, we, we saw our survey, we're getting a little older in the city, and so that was why I'm asking about master bedrooms on the main, and, and things, because I can see that this could be a product, that you're maintaining all the yard, I hear from residents, some would like to stay in Highland, but maybe the bigger yard is not what they're looking for at this time, and so, as we've kind of looked, you know, we're starting to get a lot of different product levels in, in Highland, but I've kind of, you know, Scott, as we looked, I've actually been a little bit, you know, excited how Highland, I think, has been, you know, a little bit more visionary, we've kept some larger lots out there, we have a, a nice big subdivision coming in with 68 lots, I think we're going to see, you know, we've seen some really nice subdivisions still coming in with the larger lots, we have now some other options over by the high school, well, you know, we're starting to get variety, I remember going with the mayor, and, and, and we were called to lead us up there at the, at the, at the, we went to the governor's office, mayor, and we all remember when they, we kind of, you know, here we are, we're getting called to lead us down in Highland, because we only would do large lots, we wouldn't think about having different density, and I think as a city, we were answering it, but we're not just pepper spraying it everywhere across the city, we're saying, this is where I think it will fit, it's, hopefully it won't affect the other residents that want to have the larger lots, and that we have our open space subdivisions, which personally, I think have a great place in Highland, and, and fit in Highland, and we have our different density, I've, I've kind of liked to see that vision that's starting to come forward, so.
We couldn't agree more, I, you know, as you guys probably know, that Highland has one of the highest median incomes in the state. We couldn't agree more. I, you know, as you guys probably know, that Highland has one of the highest median incomes in the state. And as the population ages, they still want to stay. They want to stay in Highland. They just need a place to be able to move into a home that doesn't have a half-acre or one-acre lot, but still want to be around their friends and in the same community. And we hope that, we think that that's going to be a large segment of this demographic.
The pricing's a little hard, but that's not what we get to determine.
They're going to be selling these homes with a lot of equity, I think.
I, I saw over here the townhomes. I think they're, you know, one went up for sale for $520,000, and I'm going, "Are you joking?" And you'd see in Tuscana, they're up over $400,000 now, and I'm going, "Are you joking?" You know, and it's the whole market. I understand it's the, everything's rising. It's just, it's hard. You know, we, those who have kids that still need to get in homes, it's one of their greatest fears, so.
Great.
Right. Any other questions?
I have a quick question, just not for you, McKay, but going off of that. Nathan, what's going on with moderate-income housing with that whole thing? We haven't talked about that yet this year. Do we have an obligation there?
We did our report like we were supposed to at the end of last year.
We'll have to do another one at the end of this year.
Yeah.
We just hadn't talked about it yet, so I was wondering if it just took a backseat or went away?
Not on my radar, sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. I was just curious that you brought it up.
Brittany, I think, you know, I know we don't want to get too sidetracked, but I think the state legislators passed the accessory apartment. But we were kind of ahead of that game last year when we passed some things. But that was what the state's been focusing on, is accessory apartments, which we have worked on here in the city, so.
Okay, motion.
I move that the city council accept the findings and approve 10-700 final plat, subject to the four stipulations recommended by staff.
Oh, second.
That's the five stipulations with the brownstone, sorry.
I would like to amend that to be five.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim, starting with Tim.
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously. Onto item nine.
Done.
Okay, you want to run with this one?
Mayor, this is yours.
Okay, yeah, I saw that it's, your name was there, and I go, "Oh." You're welcome to do it. Okay, this is, this is my item. I was part of the subcommittee that went through the properties. This is the sell of a land, next slide. So, we're just going through what we've previously discussed. But here's the criteria that we formed for what, when we're looking at property that's either orphan or open space, here the criteria we're looking and saying, "Okay, if it meets these criteria, then we would consider it." I added a bullet eight here that we hadn't talked about in, in closed session. But, the process would be that we talk about the list of properties, leave that discussion open, and then vote on it in 30 days after that. So, we, we put a, we put out on the table what we're doing. We let people submit additional requests. And then, on our next meeting, it was, is this the end of main one? Is when this would come up again?
Whatever 30 days was, yeah.
Right, yeah. So, it'll be the end of main meeting when we, we go through the list and potentially have other people that have requested items for us to consider, and then, then do a surplus resolution at that time. Next item. Here's the list that we went through. We took a list of over 200 properties that the city owns. Staff went through that and said, "Which ones do we think could even be sold?" And then we applied our criteria to them, and then came up with this list of about, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Is that right? Seven, seven, seven properties that could be sold, and many of them involve splitting it. Doesn't mean that the buyers would buy, but it would be out there, and staff could move on it. So, let's go to the next one. We, we used as a basis for setting a price, because this has been one of the more contentious items, we went and picked properties adjacent to where our sellable properties are, and then took the county price, used the 25% formula, because that's what came out from a previous appraisal, and then landed at 274 an acre. This would get updated every year after the county appraisals come out. And then, when we review the properties again next year, the price would be adjusted accordingly. And we'd use these same properties. It becomes really, really easy to just, you know, plug the numbers into those and then move forward. So, I think that's a, I, I'm really pleased that we all could feel like-
I mean, on that 274, these were all, these are properties that are unbuildable, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, these are, you couldn't, you couldn't sell them independently and do anything with them. It has to get attached to something to be useful. Next, next slide. So, the first one that we are talking about, and it's the blue area there, looking at selling, next slide. This one, when we first talked about, we thought there might have been some encumbrance with, say, an AF ditch. Engineering looked into it, and there's no encumbrances, so we could sell that east, the west side there.
Mayor, would you mind just seeing, like, on the one that we were talking about, it was by Steve Rock's home, it was-
Correct.
Number 10, just to make sure I'm on the right?
Yeah.
Because that hasn't changed up there. I just want to make sure I'm on the right.
So, this is 10B. I split that, that's one parcel for us. But that west side is, is actually available for sell. If you go north of that on the Utah County property map, there are, there's a narrow corridor that, that heads east and curves, and those have all been bought. So, I assume that was a planned trail at one point in time that we, for whatever reason, said, "It's not going to happen." It might have been topography, because it's too steep. But, this, this one is one of the ones that we were having engineering check, and it came back clear. So, it's also available for sale, or could be. Next item. Next slide. So, and I, if you look at these parcels, on the right, the top right, I have, I use the Utah County parcel map measurement thing to say how much land that really is. So, in this case, it's, this is in North Canterbury. The area in red is where there is an existing trail that gets out onto the Murdoch Canal Trail. So, other than that existing trail, everything else would be sellable to those residents right there. Next, and that represents almost an acre of land. So, the next piece is to the south and east of that, it's another section. And that's, what is that? That's, those four, three homes could, could buy that as well.
But this is number 44, right?
This is number 35B. This is what I have listed there. So, it's still a continuation of the 35 section of property. That's 35A. This is 35B. The next one, and she's got the cursor there, right down there, and that's what this property represents.
But 35 going to the north is not part of the proposal to sell, correct?
On 35A, it's not. On this one, okay, go to the, so, that one, that, that north-south is not, because there's a trail there. This one, there is no trail, and so, we believe that could be sold, the north-south type section there.
Isn't, is that the one, I'm just trying to look, isn't that, if we put a trail to, from, when the workman property sells, that's how they'd access to come over to the Murdoch Trail?
Well, that's a question I, and I think we had a discussion on that. Do you just have them use the road to get to the trail or the sidewalks? If you're, if you're riding a bike, you just use the road. If you weren't, you could just use the sidewalks to get to the trail instead of going through there. And, because right now, there isn't a trails-
There's nothing there.
There's nothing there.
No, but when the, the workman property, when they sell, then that-
The trail will end across the street.
I just, this is, this would connect to our city center trail. So, I'd be, I would rather keep everything as a trail all the way through to the Murdoch versus trying to tell people to go on a road to kind of get their, that's just my thought.
That's, that's something that could be considered. That can be adjusted, because we're just walking through things. The next section is also in Canterbury North. It's across the way. And it's just this little piece on the side of that home that really, we didn't think served any purpose other than it looks like it belongs to that home, and it should, but they actually have a fence there.
But there's a sidewalk along the side there, right?
Yes. Next piece is, now we're getting into viewpoint. And the areas in blue is what's sellable on the south end. The hillside is in yellow. The stu, this is all native land. This isn't, nothing's been done to it. To the north is a trail, and so, that's really, that's not sellable. But that section in blue is, and it adds up to 1.6 acres. The only contingent there is, everybody has to buy going from the west side to the east side, because our access-
What about the people on the east? Like, you only had four owners on the east coming in?
Well, if, if the, well, yeah, you start on the east side, and they all have to buy in sequence. And if somebody doesn't, then that's where it ends.
So, what about if you have those three or four buy on the east side, and then one or two on the west?
You can't, because if, if, as soon as somebody doesn't buy, then you've created a orphan parcel if you sell further west. Because we would then be responsible for maintaining it, but we'd have no ability to access it.
Well, so, two questions about that. I was out there today with, with Josh. So, so you would say that you can only sell the ones on the end, on the east side, or the ones on the west, but not both?
No, no, no. You have to start on the east, sorry, I misspoke, and they all have to sell going west. As soon as somebody doesn't buy, that's the end of it.
There's an open, let's assume one of the homeowners' option that they did not want to buy. Does that open up to the two owners to the side that they could buy it? Does that make sense to close that in, or?
We could make that determination.
So, you're saying we'd start with the first lot on the east and just keep going until somebody doesn't?
And then-
So, how many lots total can you sell there?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, is that?
I, I, so if you, would the only problem there on the west side be that you wouldn't have access? If we could give Josh his 15-foot or whatever he needs, Todd, with that house on the very west side in the corner, can you sell that one individually without selling the other ones in the row? I'm just trying to figure out how we start at one end. We have to start at the east end.
Right. You just have to have access.
Todd, do you have an opinion about that one particularly? That's, that was one of the residents who was here earlier. So, I, he was specifically interested in that piece, is why I'm asking.
Which piece?
He lives in that house right there, yeah.
Well, you couldn't sell that and block access.
As, as the city engineer, I struggle with this piece. I'm, I'm torn. It's right at the top of that steep hill where we have constant issues trying to keep vegetation on there without watering and creating problems. So, I, I don't have a problem with selling some of that. In fact, if you, if you turned off that blue section, you will notice that there's probably three or four. Look at my, my, how many are there? Four or five of them that are already encroached?
Yes, well, you can see it.
Four. Can you see? I can't see under that from that, but you can see it on there? So, the point is, is they've already encroached. They're, they're watering back there a property that they don't own. I don't know if I, I would want them to purchase all the way to the hill anyway. It, it would be nice to maintain at least some, some sort of a flat area up there that we could keep them away from the slope, is my point. I, I honestly think that you start with the east side and see how it goes, working towards the west.
I, I know exactly how it's going to go. Just because I've talked to them a lot, so I'm, yeah, I just know-
Tell us.
Well, how it's going to go is the 1, 2, 3 on the end are, I think, ready to purchase. Is it just the three, Nick, or is it four? Four. The four. And then you have three that have maintenance agreements. And then you have the next one on the end who is interested in purchasing. So, that's how it will go.
So, let me, let me share the reasons. I don't have a problem selling off a little bit. I mean, they don't have backyards. That's the reason they've encroached and created a little grass area behind their home. I just don't want to see that entire thing be irrigated, and here's the reason. We already pump water up there. It's irrigated with, with actual culinary water. In an environment where, you know, it just seems like our, our usage just keeps going up and up and up, and our water sources aren't producing as much. In recent years, I'm hopeful that we're in a drought and that we'll come out of it. Just adding a ton of irrigated acreage up there makes me a little bit nervous.
So, your recommendation would be to have some kind of a, between the edge of the hill and the property line that we eventually sell?
Correct.
10 feet or 15 feet?
Well, just, just sell off what they've encroached, you know? Let's, let's measure it off and, and do a, meet in the middle somewhere, is, is what I would recommend as the city engineer.
Okay, and, and that's to preserve the slope so that it, you don't, like, water and start creating channels?
Correct.
So, it's not just a matter of the water usage, it's the erosion on the hill?
Correct.
I learned that in geology.
Okay, so we'll have to sort that out when we get to where it is.
But, do I, do I support selling some, if not all of this off? Like I say, keep, you know, let's meet in the middle and, and sell, sell off a little bit that, you know, makes them feel like they have a backyard, because it is unusable space. But it was meant to be natural, and so, and, and I know in Utah, natural is just dry weeds. It is. Let's not kid ourselves, so.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Well, can I say one more thing about, you're good, Todd? Yeah. One more thing about this parcel specifically, though, and this would just be a question for council, is, I think it's really hard for me to look at those first four and think we're going to sell those. And then the next three, who don't want to purchase, but they can continue using it the same way, really. They're the ones who purchased it, did. I just, I think we have a problem with encroachment. And when I was out there today with Josh, it was surprising how many people came out to talk to us. And I really got a vision for how hard his job is when you have encroachments, and it's hard to know who has what, and there's trampolines and swing sets. And it was just really enlightening to walk it with, with Josh. I think it's a problem.
So, Brittany, Brit, someone correct me if I don't understand this correctly. Maintenance agreements are renewed annually, and so, if it's something that we see is a concern, having a maintenance agreement, that someone can say, "Hey, here we want to sell," and so, that maybe maintenance agreements aren't available. Are they not?
Sorry. By the code, once they're entered into, it is good for 10 years. And then, after that, if they do not renew their contract, then basically, the council has the freedom to opt out of that. And that's supposedly supposed to be reviewed annually. But after the 10 years, they do have the opportunity, if it still meets our requirements, to enter into that agreement again, and that goes on for another 10 years.
I think you couldn't have a maintenance agreement on sellable orphan property.
If it's not sellable. That's the requirement.
How long have they had maintenance agreements there for?
In viewpoint?
Yeah.
I honestly don't know.
I bet some of them are almost 10 years old.
Brittany? Yeah, we're running into some in Canterbury for, that are 10.
Would you have a process for grandfathering ones in that already had maintenance agreements? And then I would be interested to know from Rob, because I like to see him pop up and down, what city liability issues there are, if any, for encroachments, for trampolines or swing sets or any of that.
So, as far as the grandfather issues, that would be a decision up to the council to decide whether we wanted to renew those or not. We felt that we could renew them if the property wasn't sellable as they come up. But, if they're sellable, that would be a decision that the council would need to make.
So, as the city property-
So as to city property, uh, people who are using it, they're encroaching without permission, they're considered trespassers. And you generally don't owe any kind of duty to them. It becomes a little bit more squishy when the city becomes aware of it. You know, if someone could say, oh, you're out there mowing, you know, every other week. You've seen I've had my trampoline on the edge of this cliff, and this is all city property and you've allowed me to do this. Not that I'm saying that's what it is, but in a hypothetical situation, someone could say, well, city, why didn't you say I couldn't do that? It probably wouldn't go anywhere, but it gets a little more gray. And the more notice the city has of an encroachment that's potentially dangerous. That's great.
Okay, so let me ask a question to Brittany if I can, please.
Sure.
So you met with all these neighbors. Are the three with maintenance agreements are just saying they would never consider buying the property? Even though their neighbors next door do?
Um, so can I let Nick answer that? Because he's spoken to them more recently. Is that okay?
Sure.
Nick lives and maybe you can show us which house is yours.
Uh, yeah, mine's the third one over from the east side, correct? That is it. Um, so the, it actually, the fourth home over, the home right there, they do have a maintenance agreement.
But you don't?
I do not, nope. And I don't have any encroachment on the city area, but I, that is true, that that's a common thing that people have sought, you know, put sought out whether or not they have a, a maintenance agreement. To, to keep going west, there are a couple of people that don't see any need to purchase it since they have the, the contract currently, the maintenance contract. Um, there is some amount of, um, because I've, this was actually proposed a, a few years ago. And I, I went and got everybody's signatures and everybody was willing to move forward. And so there just were two homeowners that were a little, they said, if, if we have to, if everybody is doing it, then yeah, we'll consider it. Um, and that was at the, um, a previous price of 175, which some people in viewpoint purchased land. This was about four or five years ago.
145, I believe.
What's that?
It was $145.
Okay, yeah, even better. And so, and honestly, that, that became, I think at that price, everybody was like this, okay, we'll do it. Um, I, I personally feel like there's a couple of homes that may not do it just because it's a higher price now than it was. Obviously, there's inflation. I personally think the price is completely fair and, and I totally am in support of it. I, I would say this, that although there are some people that have, um, that are the trespassers, I think is the way you said it. Um, those people are currently using water. Um, and from my perspective, the, the city could actually sell that land. At least that is some amount of revenue that is being received.
Yeah, they're using water they're not paying for because we charge by the square foot that you own.
Oh, interesting, so.
So your water bill would go up.
So yeah, that's, that's fine. And, and I think that's, so basically what I'm hearing is if you allow the purchase of the open space, then you would actually be able to charge more for that water.
Correct.
So that seems to be in, in favor of that. And then what other?
They're stealing, just so you know.
Well, is there any plans that that would ever change? That's something that occurred to me is that, I guess this is, uh, drinking water. Is there any option to change that?
No, it's not, we're not.
That's just how it's gonna be.
But, and we pay the same rate for our water as other places in the city. We don't pay more because we use all culinary.
Okay. Um, the one other thing I would mention is, is concerning the, the erosion or development close to the edge. And I understand the concern there. When you, how it works, the, the, basically the property slopes back. There's a berm that's a two to three feet tall. And, and, um, south of the berm towards the slope, in some parts, there's, are, you know, beyond that 20 feet, then there's the slope. And so to me, if there is a concern about that, being able to purchase land all the way to the berm would be a very easy delineation and, and would prevent the, any of that erosion. Because there's so much space beyond. There's a road and then there's even more space beyond that. So, yeah.
So let me ask a question before he leaves. So the advantage I see with purchasing the property is when you can fence it, right? Because these people with maintenance agreements shouldn't be fencing the back, right?
Correct.
As I understand.
And none of them have, yeah.
Okay.
Well, Scott, I see a lot more advantage.
Well, there's lots of advantage, but one big advantage, yeah.
If you are, your lot becomes larger, it becomes more marketable. It becomes, you know, your, your two, you know, your 275 or 276 is a killer buy. I mean, if you really look up what the price, I mean, for the, we're going 25% of the county value of the average. And I was going, as a business situation, that's up to each person to determine. But one of my questions I had, when you property line in the back, because as I'm looking at several of the homes, some of them do look like they have very minimal backyard.
Yeah.
What, how much are you seeing from your home? Let's say you come out your back door to where your property line's at. How much square footage do you have that way?
Uh, very little. And that's, that brings up the, the, the point that I mentioned previous, that because the backyard is so small, when they come and mow the weeds, that's how I've gotten rocks.
I mean, are you talking 10 feet? Are you talking 20 feet?
I heard Josh was out there today too. He might have a good idea.
I'm just thinking, because one of the things.
15 feet, 15 to 20 feet.
Because I, I was thinking, one way to look at the subdivision is to look what our setback requirements are. And if they're 25 or whatever, if they're 30, that's what you sell up to. So they get what the required setback would be. Because if you're worried about getting to that.
All this dead space there, you know?
Well, but that's not erosion, now that's the concern. I mean, there's two concerns. One's erosion, the second is we're using culinary water. This isn't, you know, it, it, it is expensive water we're putting up there. And we almost lost, you know, residents probably don't love to hear, but we were on, you know, on some, you know, shoestrings with some culinary, you know, wells earlier this year that, hey, if one goes down, we've got issues. And so that, you know, our culinary, culinary water is precious, because that's what we drink. You know, that's only just a thought, so.
Okay, fair.
Okay.
Anything else for our gentleman friend here? All right, next, next slide. And now we get to the Kilgore's. And that is the piece there. And they, they have a better map that they've done, but it's, it's similar. But they've divided up the property.
Can I, can I ask on the Kilgore? The map that was provided, has that been seen by all the property owners? And is agreeable with, with how the lines are put together with all the property owners?
Okay. So that's good, that's already, that's already worked out. I think that's a good thing. Next, I don't know that there is a next. That's it. So those are the properties that we've discussed. I just wanted to show how big, you know, how much acreage it is. And, uh, and I don't, we have not, to my knowledge, approached any, anybody else or have been talking to anybody else other than the viewpoint people about the, the ability to purchase that. So I don't know where we're at. We wouldn't be until we surplus it, but we would go out then and say, okay, this is available if you want to buy it. Subject to not creating orphan parcels, uh, we, we would just proceed then. But we have a month to, to, for you guys to think about this and.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes. So in the maps that we were given, um, and I guess they were generalized, but the Apollo Circle property shows up in one of the maps. I understand the council back in, in 2017 already surplus that. There was an issue with the water line in there. But I'm, I've been getting emails from people on the south side that are interested again in buying that. That wasn't in one of the ones you showed. But that was a previously approved by the council, but it's in our packet. And then there was, uh, the preceding map. So I'm talking about number 76, 79 map, the horseshoe trail. And 75, the Highland Hills. And the Highland Hills one, we approved, we surplus everything west of the trail in 19, or in 2018. So I was just curious why these maps came back into the discussion. Because it's already been surplused. It's in our packet. It's number 75 showing the, uh, Highland Hills, the area on the east slope that we've always surplused. And then the next in the packet that I have, maybe I've got an old, old packet or something. But then we have the Apollo horseshoe trail. And my understanding is the council, before I came on, surplused that. People were interested on the south side of the trail. And I've been getting emails from them again, saying they're interested again, which I thought was interesting because I thought there was a big issue with the irrigation line that was blocking that. So I just was curious why they showed up here again.
So we sent, uh, I sent, was able to send an updated list of properties and exhibits to correct what was in.
Did you do that today or something? Because I, I, this, this package from Sunday night.
Yeah, I did it yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Late yesterday.
So you took those off?
Yeah. Anything that's already been surplused would, I assume the council would honor those surplus.
Okay, since we're discussing the horseshoe one. So I have people emailing me saying they're interested in buying again. Todd's still here with us. The issue was the irrigation line. What should I tell the people? I've told them that they'd have to pay 274 or 6, whatever now, but.
They'd still have to fund the, the pressure, changing the pressurized irrigation. And that's when the roadblock happened.
Right.
It was a lot of money. It's probably more expensive now, not less expensive, so.
So the question they have is, are they responsible to move that line?
Yes.
That was part of the motion, I believe, when the city council did it was.
Okay.
That they, that they would surplus it, but they, the responsibility of all the irrigation, or if there's a city water that needed to be moved or the new irrigation lines was the residents' expense.
Yes.
Well, I think also this is a great thing about this plan that we have is that we keep, open a 30-day window for people to analyze and come to staff and say, hey, this is a parcel I'd like you to consider. And so staff can look at that and say, this is the reason why, why not? And, you know, give those reasonings. I really, I just like that idea.
And I agree with that, but I, I just, I need to have my question answered about the horseshoe trail.
So the answer is they're responsible for, for taking care of the water issues.
And I understand that, but can they hire a, someone to do it? If the city approves that person and then pay for it and then the city? Or, I mean, do they have to hire, um, someone that's approved by the city? See, I just don't know how they go about it.
So, so Josh and I have met with them, Josh far more times than I have. Um, but we've met with them several times. And, and Scott, what we've told them is that they need to get a design by a landscaper, a sprinkler contractor. Uh, because by taking the property and narrowing it up, all the sprinkler heads just can't be changed. Because now you're changing all of the arcs and all of that thing.
And I understand that totally, but what they want to know is if they hire somebody and pay for it, does the city have to approve the plan, I think is the question.
Yes, because we still will maintain whatever is left. So it needs to be per our standards. So Josh will need to review it and, and make sure that all of those heads, the design, everything is per city standard. Because if not, we're taking something over as, that's less standard. We don't carry, you know, those types of sprinklers, those types of things. It's more maintenance for us. And so it is very expensive. We've walked it with them. We've explained exactly what we're looking for. The problem is, is that the two individuals that we have worked with have tried to get a contractor out there. It's expensive, you know, and.
But that option's still open.
The, the option is always open. If, if they can get a design and let us review it and, and give them feedback, um, we'll help them through the process. So.
I think, um, Councilmember Smith brings up a really good point as we're putting this plan together. I think it would be fair to let, uh, property owners know if there are any additional expenses, that they will be responsible for, um, any kind of fees or surveying or how that works. I think that needs to be something that we decide so that residents can understand that cost going into it.
I think that's, Todd, has it not been they've had to pay for, if they had to redo their, their lot line, they had to pay for the surveying, is that correct?
You know, I can't remember.
We split that, we did split it.
Okay.
We split it with the Highland Hills, that, that was.
We split off costs, closing.
And so as, as since you're here, if we can go to, I have number 75. You know, Scott mentioned we'd sold part of it. I believe we only sold everything on the west side.
Correct.
And, and everything on the east side was because of some drainage issues or things?
We have a storm drain line on the, just the east side of that trail.
I'm just, just in case someone comes and tries to approach the council, hey, we, they're all interested in buying it, but we have a storm drain the way it all drains there.
Yeah, that's why I was curious.
For those maps, there was a, a table before the maps that said for each of the properties. And on the right side was a note. And like on that Highland Hills, the note was, you know, we sold all that we can sell going north. Uh, the east side is, is subject to some drainage issues and it's not sellable. So I.
So we, we've been through the list as engineering staff and, and put down all of the properties that we know their engineering concerns or utilities. We've said, this is, this is what they are and we would prefer that we not sell them, so.
So just one last question, still about Polo Circle.
Okay.
I mean, because they're emailing me for some reason. But I guess the question is, is that was approved by the council in 2017 with the old square foot cost, with the stipulation that they pay for moving the irrigation lines and getting all that done. So do we now come back and say, well, you didn't buy it back then, now you gotta pay 276? What's, what's, I just want to understand where we are.
Scott, can I buy your home that was done at the price of 270?
Oh, no, I, you know, that's what you're saying, Kurt. I just want to know what the decision is.
They had the option to do it. They're the ones that didn't move forward. I'm just, that, I think if it was, you know, if they, if they didn't, they're the ones, when I remember attending the city council meeting, I wasn't on the council, but they didn't move forward because of the cost of the irrigation. That's what my recollection is.
Yeah, I was, back in 2007. I understand that, but I just want to know, because it was approved back then. So I just need to know what I need to tell them.
Um, Rob, do you have an opinion on that legally?
Because it was approved in 2017 at the lower amount.
We should ask for a seat up front.
Or a mic in the back.
I like walking, it's great, to be the stand-up guy once in a while. Uh, I don't know exactly what, was that option that was approved? Was that just the council voted to approve it or was it contract signed?
Okay, Mr. Attorney, you know, to turn the mic on, right?
I blame Todd, Stephanie, I'm sorry. Uh, was that just a?
Nathan, do you remember? I don't remember.
Or was a contract signed?
I remember we surplused it, but we didn't, we wouldn't have signed contracts.
We haven't done contracts.
No contracts with anybody. So there's no guaranteed pricing, right?
Exactly. I mean, the council could choose to honor it, but there's no entitlement to, to that original price.
But the surplusing still stands.
Correct.
But you're saying the price doesn't necessarily?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? All right, next item, Mr. Raptax.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I like thought, I don't know what I thought. Anyway, when you said next item, I didn't think you meant next item. So going back though, can we, um, tell residents how much it's going to cost?
We just say we share the, we split the closing costs, including surveys and whatever else.
We don't know, because each one's different.
So we just say we split it 50/50? The city pays 50% and then however many residents there are collectively pay the other 50%?
But there are specific costs for each house, because you do a title, you do a title search of the property. But then you have to do property lines.
Sure, I just think, I just think it's fair to tell them going into it what costs they're going to have above and beyond. Does it make sense to charge a little bit more per square foot to cover those costs?
No.
So I just think they need to have kind of a ballpark.
So we, we come, we've provided, in the past, we have provided estimates of what we think they are based on, uh, past experience. But we don't know until we know how many properties we're dividing up, what the cost of the surveyor is at that time. But we can estimate, uh, that's all we've got. We can get pretty close. But they're, they're nominal, I mean, we're not talking about $30,000.
Right, but even like for somebody like, um, like Nick here to know how much, um, he's able to purchase once Todd does the engineering or, or whatever and tells him. I'm asking, I guess, does that come early in the process so that then they can make a decision within that 30 days? Because then it just, it seems like we're spending quite a bit of additional staff time and resources that seems like are hard to come by.
So once, once the.
What 30 days?
The 30 days where the, we'll publish these addresses and then.
Well, that, there's no time, that. There's no time, that's just, that's when we would effectively surplus it, there's, who knows what the horizon is after that.
The intent of the 30 days is to say, here's what the committee and the council is considering, does anybody else have any property that they would like the council to consider? Then the committee says, oh, yeah, okay, yes, no, maybe so, and they pick the ones, and then those are the ones the council adopts, and that's what we're going to do this year. Okay? And then the next step is, is to take, let's say, viewpoint, whatever section, here's who's going to buy what. And we develop the estimates, somebody's going to buy 2,000 square feet, somebody develops, gonna buy 200 square feet, somebody's gonna buy 300. And we say, here's our, here are the estimates for that property.
Got it, so that will happen after the 30 days, okay.
And that will include the cot, the property purchase, and estimates on closing and stuff like that.
So have we ever, I mean, we've discussed this a lot in the past, but have we ever like voted saying we're going to cover half the cost? And this is going to be $2.76 a square foot.
No, that'll be next, because we've had the policy, right?
Right.
Rob's presented the policy, so the, these properties are adopted as part of that policy, okay? So, and they're updated every year, so the council's requested to talk about the parcels. And so, once the council determines what parcels, we'll bring that whole package to you for adoption.
And it'll have the cost and the half.
Yes.
Okay, so all those things will be delineated.
Have we not voted on the 276? I thought we all.
We've talked about it, we agreed to it, but, so as far as I know, we're all in accord on that, but we haven't had a vote.
We have also not voted on where those funds will go once they're collected.
We talked about that.
We talked about it, but we didn't vote on it.
Then we could say the buyers bear all the cost, right, we could do that if you wanted to, or we bear all the cost, or anything in between. Any other discussion on this? You're required to stay till the end of the meeting, just so you know, it's like.
Hey, I would do anything to make this happen. I've been back and forth for 10 years on this.
So Arctic Circle is still open, and I know that, I, the, the, the council likes ice cream cones.
No bribing can be happened here.
This is not bribing, because we're just, he's saying, what can I do for you?
Okay.
Done.
Okay.
Oh, you have the wrong one.
But you're, but we really, this is.
Wrong PowerPoint.
We will vote on this in 30 days, and it's, it's going to happen, so anybody that's worried. Right, it gets voted on, and essentially, we would agree to surplus the property, and then a whole process starts, but the process starts, and I, I think you can go home and sleep and know that sometime between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, too.
That property will be able to be purchased.
And my recommendation, if you have a council that's agreeable to it, you act upon it, does that make sense? Councils will change, you'll have a new, you can have new council people next year that could feel different. You act upon, once you have, if you have a council that's agreeable, then move, get it, get it done.
Okay, all right, you ready, Mayor?
I am ready to be done, yes.
So, the next item is to talk about the Raptax, as Mayor discussed, specifically on the timeline. If the council chooses to proceed with Raptax, we have some very specific steps that we have to take. So before you is a summary, I won't go into what a Raptax is and all that kind of stuff, since we basically, hey, we do a Raptax for these things, and we're asking if the county will be seeking to impose a countywide Raptax, okay? That has, has to happen.
So the reason they do that is because the state allows the county to implement a Raptax countywide. If the county did that, then nobody else in the county could implement a second one on top of that.
Correct. If the county doesn't, then 75 days before the election, the council would have to make a decision to send it to the ballot. That would be on August 19th. The key, key things with these two is, at those times, we are notifying our residents what we're using the Raptax for. So for example, if we were going to use it to build a cultural center, we would have to say that. If we were going to use it to build another splash pad, we'd have to say that, or maintain parks, or, yeah, Josh is going to shoot me when I said that one. When I said splash pad, right, Josh? Yeah, he laughed, I'm being facetious on purpose. Anyways, or maintain a park, or build a park, or whatever we're going to use it for, we have to say, we have to say that. The other key is, we have a notice that we have to do three weeks prior to the election, which is October 12th. So, we need to start having some discussions amongst the council and decide if this is something that you would like to start pursuing. Now, I don't think there's any harm in doing a general statement to the county, saying, hey, we want to use it for park facility, you know, for example, park and capital construction, and operation of this, this, and this, and sending that to the county and having them respond, that gives you a little bit of time. We can narrow it down after that, right, Rob, I think, that's what he's checking. But anyways, I just wanted to go over the timeline with you, if this is something that you wanted to consider, we need some direction from the council to get it on that November ballot.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I want to clarify this, so the sales tax increased by point zero.
Yes.
Point 001, that's one tenth of one cent.
Yes, Tyler has some information, we ran some numbers on how much that would potentially generate.
Right, so a tenth of a percent, and looking back the last three years.
A tenth of one cent, right, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the last year, the last full year, fiscal year, we've seen, of course, a substantial increase in sales tax. But going back two years prior, we would estimate approximately $100,000 revenue coming from the, the Raptax. That would be, would have been more in fiscal year 20, but feel that $100,000 is an appropriate estimate.
So one of, one of the key things is, go over what's included and what can't be included in that.
Long list of items that would be included in that taxable, those taxable items, but would not include grocery or unprepared food, but in general, other items that, that sales tax applies to. So prepared food, any, any utility, like things that, rock and power, those types of things that, that a sales tax applies to.
Do our neighboring cities have a Raptax so that I'm paying this when I shop anywhere besides Highland?
Lehigh does, AF does, Cedar Hills does.
Cedar Hills does, what?
Oh, Lehigh does have it, I thought, that, that does not.
American Fork?
Yes.
American Fork does.
Cedar Hills does.
Yes, I'm pretty sure. AF I know does.
So we're already supporting the other city's Raptax?
Correct. Like when you go to Walmart in Cedar Hills, you're helping pay for their Harvey Park.
Yeah, they used it for Harvey.
Now, Mayor, when we did our survey, we asked, and I understand maybe everyone's not as fully educated in the survey, but we did not have, did we get over 50? I don't think we got over.
52% were either likely or very likely.
That's a.
So that's the only one that was over 50.
Yeah, that's a close margin.
But there were some that were said unlikely, and, and I think some of that comes down to, do you know what it is? I, I would doubt, I mean, I know we tried to explain it, but.
It could just be no on taxes.
Right.
No tax increase.
I think 52% is really high without the communication and marketing of it.
And how you're going to use it, remember the road stuff fell a couple times before, we said, this is exactly what we want to do with it, and this is one. And this is one that the voters actually get to decide, so I, I think it's, because of where it's at, it's worth pursuing, because in the end, at the end of the day, the voters get to decide, it's not our call, or your call.
I would lean towards using the money for parks and trails.
Yeah, so like help finish Mountain Ridge Park and put in more pickleball courts.
Fix the trails up.
And fix the trails, yeah?
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I'm also in favor, do you think this changes our ability if we were to need to raise property taxes or anything at any point? Does doing this kind of a tax increase one year?
I, I think it would mitigate it clearly. I, because it's, it's money that we would have, this, the projects that we would be spending this on is money that would come out of the general fund, which is where your property tax goes, so putting this in mitigates a future property tax increase. Either delays it or lowers what that requirement would be. And, and having Alpine and, you know, people that shop at Macy's help pay for it.
I think of it as well explained, but we're going to have to raise the culinary water fee this year too. Because we're going to use up all the surplus this year.
But it, it does cost them, we have to drill a new well, and that's 1.6 million dollars.
I guess this one, though, isn't aimed at Highland residents, it's aimed at those who come and use our amenities.
Right, those people that go up the canyon every Sunday.
Exactly, or using Highland Glen, I mean, let's contribute to cleaning it up.
And then when the boiler bills are commercially there, that'll be revenue that we capture from people using Highland Glen, so that's good. So I think you can take direction as we need to get ready, so let's talk to Josh and see if, if we had $100,000, where he would want to, what's best use from a Parks and Trails perspective? Okay, any other comments on that? All right, next item is update on the park maintenance building.
Yeah, picture's worth a thousand words, I just threw it up there. So, I, I just wanted to give an update on where we're at. Last, we talked about this, we were, we were working with Utah County to take down the existing building over on the Harvey Boulevard parcel. We got permission from Utah County to tear it down, we hurried and did it because we heard rumors that other people wanted it, and so our parks guys, Josh and all of his guys, worked very hard and took it down, we have it stored.
Thanks, Nate.
Hey, hurry and get that on camera.
Were there any parking issues while he was running in to get it? That's what I want to know.
I think Brian waved them.
I'll be quick so that doesn't melt, and you can all eat it, since you asked him to get it, I didn't do that.
He noted I was not serious.
So, our, our parks crews worked very hard and hurried and got the building down, and we've got it stored. We're in the process of surveying the existing pad to make sure that we have all the bolt pattern ready to go, so if and when we build it, we're ready. So Josh and Mike have been working to put this site plan together, this is the old city hall. We've gone back and forth with a few renditions, how it will work, how we will get equipment in, how this will function with the existing building. This is our latest plan, the plan is to put a, a good concrete panel wall along the, the east side there, along Alpine Highway, to basically fence it off so that we have a enclosed site, and then we would fence off, obviously, straight across the parking lot. So we would expand the parking lot so that the old city hall can utilize a lot more parking in there during the night events that they have in there. And then during the day, we would actually use that for, for employee parking. So that's, this is the conceptual site plan that we're going to try to move forward with, because we feel like it functions the best. But what I wanted to do tonight is give you an, we actually got a bid to re-put up the old building, and, go ahead.
Can I ask a question, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
I assume that's the building on the Alpine Highway?
Yes.
Okay, can it look like the blue building up the street that they built?
The old building that everybody asked me about?
That's not an old building, that's a home.
Is that a home?
That is a home.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
That's a home?
They got so sick of apparently the cost of wood that they built a home with metal.
If you haven't, see, it looks like, it is.
It's like an old building, but it is a home.
We allowed metal home?
We do, per code.
So.
We didn't think anyone would do it, but.
But it's just open, right, because it's still, there's no, the inside is really open.
I, I've been down there and kind of looked at it, and yeah, that south side is very open, but anyway, yeah, we can make it look like that, if you'd like, but, so.
Everybody asks me about that all the time.
I wanted to give, I wanted to give an update because we got a few bids, Josh and I, I actually had Josh pull a whole bunch of measurements on his equipment, lengths. The concern is, is once we got looking at the size of the building, the existing building is 40 by 80, and when we started pulling measurements of his actual equipment, we actually have truck and trailer longer than 40 feet. And so, the, the, the size of the existing building won't work for his equipment, we need 50. And if you look at the design that we did on the Mountain Ridge site plan that we had bid that was 1.3 million dollars, that was a, a 100 by 50 building, and that is long enough to get the equipment in, shut the doors, and, and still be able to get around. The, the existing structure was just a teeny bit short, and so what I did is I got some bids to, to actually put that building back up, the existing building, and re-sheet it is, is just under 60,000, 57,900, so 57,900.
But can we make it bigger?
So, and that is for the 40 by 80 building, okay? I actually reached out to the, the people that built our salt storage building, and I got a bid from them, and another contractor that we got a bid on the salt storage, we, we ended up getting two bids on the salt storage building. Those two bids came back for a brand-new building at 80 by 50, so the width that we need for everything brand-new was 107,242, and the other one was 116,000 even. So those were the two bids for a brand-new building, the size that we need, and that's what we're showing here, that is our recommendation. We still can use the building that we pulled down, I hope that in the future, when we, at some point, get a little bit more of a designated staff at the cemetery, because the day will come, that we can utilize that building.
Because we have space allocated there for a building.
We have, we have space allocated, and my hope is, is that we can use that building, just a smaller version of it, and that would work at the cemetery.
What size is this one at the community center again, the one that you're proposing, is 80 by, or is it?
50 by 80.
Okay.
So it's a little bit smaller than what we originally had planned at Mountain Ridge, but we feel like this will work. And because, and here's the reason, by doing it here, we can utilize the basement of the old city hall for a couple offices and a break room.
That was actually my next question, was going to be, are you anticipating that basement of the center then, you know, the old community center turning into the maintenance building offices, and so my real question, the arts council usually holds some classes down there, would that not be available?
We, we are hoping that we can utilize. We, we are hoping that we can utilize that for the parks in the basement and utilize the whole upstairs for everything else. That is our hope.
Because the arts council traditionally uses really, I mean, the plays are upstairs, but they use for their art, art classes and music. I mean, they're usually downstairs.
Well, and, and my point is, is usually when they're having those, upstairs is usually available. So they could still have their classes. It just would be upstairs.
Oh, while you're gone during the day, they could move into the metal building.
Right.
So along with all of our storage.
So Todd, what would this building look like? It's right on the Alpine Highway. I kind of worry that we're uglyflying the Alpine Highway and that strip.
So the best thing that I would, I would recommend that all of the city council take a look at because the, the building, whether we do a brand-new one or we spend the sixty thousand dollars to put up the old one, which I'm, I'm hoping that we can avoid because in, in looking at all of our equipment, it defeats the purpose. Why put up the building if, if our parks equipment doesn't fit properly in it?
One hundred and sixteen has their, their erection, it's the metal building with it fully erected.
The two, the two bids were a hundred and seven and a hundred and sixteen. Now, keep in mind, this does not include the footing and foundation and flatwork. And we're, we're planning on putting this building on four-foot stem walls. So a four-foot concrete stem wall and then the building will sit on top of it. And so either way, we have to spend that money. The difference is sixty thousand to a hundred and ten thousand. So an additional fifty thousand, we get the building size that we need and it's brand-new. And it looks so much nicer than, than the old building. But what I would suggest is the council take a drive tomorrow, if you have chance, and go down SR seventy-four. Remind me his name, Mayor.
Artist. What's-
The artist that lives on the corner down here going into your subdivision.
Oh, Jay Roundy.
Jay Roundy, yep.
So Jay Roundy built a building that would look very similar to this. It actually has the concrete stem wall and then it has the building on top.
And it's right on the Alpine Highway.
And, and it's, it's, it's a beautiful building. And ours would look similar. It would be set back. It would have a wall. We plan to do landscaping along.
So you'd have wall and landscaping on the side of the building?
Correct.
I just think we just need to make the Alpine Highway look nice.
Right.
And I don't think that new home does it.
Where is it exactly?
So it's, it's the entrance to Pheasant Hall of Subdivision.
Okay.
He lives on the south corner.
It'd be the what? The third, third entrance in from the New Cadell Boulevard Road.
Okay.
And, and he has, he has an outbuilding in the backyard that would look very similar to this.
Okay.
And there's a rock pillar with a pheasant on it.
And, and the reason we wanted to-
Just one pheasant?
Just one.
Did there used to be two?
Well, there's a small pheasant on the other side.
Oh, oh, okay.
The reason we wanted to bring this to council tonight is we are going to need to do some engineering on the stem wall, the footing and foundation. And we don't want to get ahead of ourselves and spend money if we're not being supported to do the new building. And so we just want not an approval, but at least a nod that yes, that we support staff in moving forward with the fifty by eighty building. And we will start doing some plans and then we will get final approval to build it soon.
I, I support it a hundred percent. It's a lot cheaper than one point two million.
One point three.
One point three million.
Yeah. And, but, but this is, this is a hundred and seven thousand for the building. Then we have the concrete and we have the site improvements. So right now, we have three hundred thousand dollars set aside for this structure. So we're hopeful that it's not much more than that. With current prices and everything we've got going on, I don't know, but we're going to hur- At this point, once we have this approval, verbal commitment to move forward, we're going to hurry. I've told Josh that I'm going to try to, you know, at least get it out to bid before I leave. So I got to hurry.
I think, go.
Hurry. Or you got to stay longer.
So anyway, if, I want to see some nods.
Nod.
Yes. Okay. We will go ahead and get plans drawn up and get working on some bids that we can bring back to you for approval. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion, a motion to adjourn to executive session after like a ten-minute break.
Can we eat ice cream first?
We can, or while we're having the executive session.
So-
We, we need to stay with a treat during the executive session model.
But didn't you bring brownies?
I know that we go to-
Brownies and ice cream, that, oh, fat boys. Mayor, I, I knew that we'd go to an executive session to discuss either purchase of real estate or also personnel issues and take a ten-minute break.
Can, can I just interject something real quick? I'm going to share an email with everybody that I got from the animal shelter. There's been a lot of noise about trying to block the process of euthanasia there. There's a really nice one from Todd Gattling that I'll just share with the council. I don't know if you've all seen it. But euthanizing animals, and there's only a very small fraction down there. We even adopt out most of the rabbits from Lehigh. But it's carbon monoxide. It's very humane. It's a very small percentage. So I'm just going to send that out rather than talk about it here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And are you seconding the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So motion by Kurt, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are adjourned to executive session in ten minutes.
Scott, thanks for your comment.